Tell me which one, uh... Oh, really? Oh, Roberts, oh, Roberts, God. Oh, you got it. You want a phone, a phone number for him? Yeah, you don't want to spend money on this necessarily.
Yeah, I want to answer that one.
So, there's a couple of issues that I have. And I don't really think they're present because they're independent. Those two locations, they don't seem to work. We put it down on the airport.
That one is a nice one, but I hear that, so you call that eight one.
Thank you. 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 Abdallah Lee. He has been a leader and a teacher in the Tampa community for over thirteen years. He is active with the Muslim Connection, teaching classes and providing Islamic Council to the community. He is a father of eight children and has been a husband for forty years. Imam, if you would like to give us the invocation, please, we'll all rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bismillah, Rahmaan, Rahim. In the name of God, most gracious, most merciful. Praise be to God, the chercher, the sustainer, the most gracious, most merciful, master of the day of judgment. Thee alone do we beseech for help, and thine aid we seek. Show us the straight way. The way of those on whom thou hast bestowed thy grace, whose portion is not wrath, and who go not astray. God, there is no God but Him, the ever-living, the self-sustaining, the self-substantive. Slumber nor sleep overtakes Him, nor does He rest. To Him belongs whatever is in the heavens and in the earth, who is there that can intercede with Him except by His permission. He knows what lies before us and what lies behind us. And they do not comprehend anything except by His knowledge or His will. Ameen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is here. The United States of America. The Lord is our God, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Roll call, please.
Dean Futter?
Here.
Goos?
Here.
Man, Maneskaup?
Here.
Seidra?
Here.
Miranda? Charles Seck?
Here.
And Deary.
All right, may I have approval of the agenda and the addendum? Motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilman Goos. We have a question from Dean Futter?
Uh, yes, I was in communication with Mr. Viero this morning. I wanted to pull item twenty-nine.
All right.
And, uh, and I have a recusal on item twenty.
All right, and you'll follow the paperwork at that time?
Correct.
All right, so, uh, item twenty-nine would be pulled in addition to what we've approved for the agenda. All right, all in favor? All righty, so, uh, we move to ceremonial activities. I yield to Councilman Goos.
Good morning and Happy New Year, Council.
Good morning.
Hope we all had a festive time over the holidays, and our resolutions will come true for 2020. This morning gives me great pleasure to introduce a gentleman who's very well-known throughout our community. He served in many capacities, the university, within our communities, and he's also a fraternity brother of mine, Kappa Phi Phi, so I know he's, he's a good man. This morning I have Dr. Samuel L. Wright, if you could come up, sir. Many of you know that Dr. Wright has, uh, been a part of what we call the MLK festivities, and he's given out numerous grants for the past couple of years for different organizations to apply and be able to put on day of services in our communities. And I think that's a wonderful thing, and, uh, those festivities will be starting, a lot of them are for the whole month of January, if I'm not mistaken. But let, let me say, uh, on behalf of myself and this community, I want to make a presentation to Dr. Samuel L. Wright, Senior. Tampa City Council applauds Dr. Samuel Wright, Senior, for your steadfast service to the Tampa community, your commitment to the Tampa Bay area with the founding of the Tampa Bay Black Heritage Festival as a major contributor to the Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau is profound. Your vision to arise awareness of the African-American heritage within the Tampa Bay area and the surrounding community has made a lasting difference, and I can attest to that, it has made a lasting difference. As having been honored as a champion of education for your strong commitment to education, you accepted your calling as a freedom fighter and fought for progress as, as at various schools, colleges, and universities. You have been credited with changing the dynamics of campus life for non-majority students by fighting differences, intolerance, and injustice in the most positive way. Dr. Wright, you are a humanitarian and a true servant of everyone with your overwhelming influence that has touched the lives of so many. We are very proud to have you as a member of our community. It is a great pleasure, Tampa City Council, to present this combination to honor Dr. Samuel L. Wright, Senior, on the ninth day of January 2020. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Good work. Let me say that I'm indebted to you here at City Hall and City Council. I know the work that you're doing and what you continue to do. I did it myself back in nineteen-eighties when I was in Boynton Beach. I was the first black to ever be elected to City Council and served for four years. But I'm pleased, and I accept this award from, from Councilman, uh, Goos and the City Council, uh, in loving memory of my mother and father, Samuel and Ravina Wright. They both have gone on, and my grandmother, Roxy, who's, who spent a lot of time training me. And so, too much is given, much is required and expected. I'm delighted to see the growth in Tampa Bay. I love Tampa Bay. I've been here for thirty-five years, and I'm still asked, am I coming back to Boynton Beach? And I tell people, no, I love the city where I live. And so, I want to say, I appreciate the support you have given the Tampa Bay Black Heritage Festival over the years, the other a- activities you've done in our, uh, communities of color, because I was concerned about a cultural board here in Tampa back in, in nineteen ninety-nine. I was in doctoral study at the University of South Florida when I gave birth to the, uh, festival, and it was done a- as a, a board member of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. But I did get the support of the city, and we still have the support of the city and the county and many other organizations, and I want to say thank you so much. Marcus, Marcus Garbus once said that if, uh, a people doesn't understand their culture or, uh, their heritage, it's, it's like a tree without roots. And certainly, we want to make sure that the children in our community and that the people with, with whom you serve understand that they have roots and a deep foundation, like a banyan tree, because it's, the roots are so deep that you can never get to the bottom of them. That's the way we should feel about our heritage and our culture. So, I thank you so much, and God, Godspeed to you for the work that you're doing, and I know many of you, and I know you'll do a wonderful job to make us happy here in the city of Tampa. Thank you so much, and God bless.
Anyone? Anyone? Councilman Dean Futter?
Dr. Wright, thank you so much for all you do in our, in our community. Um, uh, I was just thinking, you were talking about the, uh, various cultural, uh, issues that we're working on, and, and I know recently we've had a lot of conversation about the Jackson House. Uh, very exciting, uh, news from the Corso Benick family to help out with that, but, uh, that's a community-wide effort, and we look forward to working on that as well as many others. But thank you so much for all you've done.
Oh, my pleasure, Councilman.
Anyone else?
Doctor, thank you very much for, for our conversations we've had. I know that there are some things that you and I did not agree on, but thank you for making me think. That's the best teacher that any, anybody could ever have, is someone to make them think. I look forward to working with you in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Let me add, it was ironic that I see Minister, uh, Michelle Paddy here, who, when I first moved to Tampa back in nineteen eighty-five after I got married, she, I worked with her for a couple of months over at Rocket Point, so it's an honor to see her this morning. She was one of the first people I got to know when I first came to this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, you know, it's, uh, uh, a great pleasure today when you can honor one of your own as well, and especially an employee who's working very hard. So, uh, my age, Sonya, come on down, I, I ha- I was giving delivery stuff to you. We have your ten-year service pen. Let me, let me say thank you for the work. No, gentlemen, you know, our age is like a marriage, you could say sometimes. Like a marriage sometimes, but again, we love you, and congratulations on your ten years of service.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much.
Anything? Sonya, Sonya. Anything from council members? Anything at all?
Please, if, if, if I may, um, we all have our own legislative aides. And Sonya, when, when I was in between, you helped me out quite a bit, and I thank you for all your help, and, you know, all the ladies help out here, uh, with, with each other's councilmen, and thank you for just being the wonderful person that you are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Um, I'll say, Sonya, you, you know what I think about you. I think you're a good woman, you are hardworking, you are sincere, you have a good heart, but more than anything, you got character. So, and, and, and also, let me just say this, you work for the hardest-working city councilman in the city of Tampa. And, and I mean that as a compliment, so you have character, so thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you.
Councilman, remember one thing, behind every successful councilman, there's even a better aide. And I don't mean Gatorade.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next we move forward to public comment. If anybody is here to speak publicly, uh, please stand up, and, uh, it's your time. Come forward, three minutes a person, please begin by stating your name, and so that we have a good idea of how many folks are here to speak about, how many, if you could raise your hand if you're here to speak during public comment. Okay, go ahead, sir, please state your name.
My name is Tim Moran, I live at five six nine Luzon, and I come before you to endorse , uh, item forty-seven on your agenda. I call your attention to this, even though it seems so minor, because it's just a minor irritant during the day, a lot of persons will drive to work, drive to school, they just have a little dodge of a car or something, or boat, whatever it is, and they forget about it, but it is a minor irritant that builds up, and it is a problem. And I believe, I want to bring to your attention the major problem. There is a safety hazard when these boats, RVs, and, and wo- workers' trailers are parked in the street. A fire truck, a garbage truck, a utility truck cannot easily pass down there, and I hope it's not your house that emergency, uh, fire rescue is delayed getting to because of this traffic problem. The second, so, the major thing is the... The major thing is the safety that it would provide by reducing this parking of these boats and whatnot. As a minor element is that it's trashy, we don't have West Palm, we don't have Palm Beach yachts parked around here, we have some of, sometimes it's abandoned. And on my way here this morning, I turn the corner, there's a large motor vehicle home, it's got all its dollies under it, so it's balanced, they've got the extensions they set out, they've been there since before Christmas, so theoretically, somebody could set up his homeless tent on the street, and I don't know what you might want to do about it. Now, these are residential streets, so you don't see them, it's a minor street, but we don't have a lot of wide streets in Tampa. Go through Tampa Heights, go through North Tampa, go through Seltzer Springs, we have streets that don't have curbs or narrow streets, so it's a safety item. But secondly, this is subsidizing somebody who's a private citizen, who's too cheap to pay for storage for his boat or his mobile home or whatever it is, and he stores it on our streets, and they're there for a long time, and it's, uh, for a free ride, so you ought to have some kind of a fee or a permit, at least get some money out of it. So, I bring that to your attention, and I hope you endorse it, and I hope you have a peaceful day.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Next, please.
Good morning, Council, Mike Peterson, Government Affairs Council for the Greater Tampa Realtors. Speaking on the same issue, item forty-seven, this overnight parking problem, I could now appreciate the kind of calls and things you get from time to time. I just kind of mentioned this in passing at our Government Affairs meeting, and kaboom, everyone had a story about how this is a problem, either in a neighborhood they live in, or a neighborhood they visit or represent when they sell homes. So, they asked that we come down and let you know that we are supportive of this initiative. Um, see that the language just came out, I know this is just a report phase, but as a general rule, we are supportive of this initiative on dealing with this overnight parking. It's my understanding that item forty-six, just before that, that's talking about construction parking plans, might be the way to deal with the occasional need to park some piece of equipment that needs to be set up for a couple of days on a construction project such as this, so I don't think the two are in conflict, as long as someone would indeed file for the construction parking plan to avoid violating this overnight parking of non-motorized vehicles, because we know this is primarily boat trailers, RVs, things of that nature that are causing the problem. So, again, Greater Tampa Realtors appreciate your heading in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good morning, Mintezna. It's the new year, twenty twenty, and done the same thing in the year two thousand and the same thing, twenty-ten. It's a new decade, and what we've seen too is African people, we see nothing changes for us. Get a lot of lip service. I can go way back, all the way back, Bemayapole, Greco, Sandy Freeman, Bob Buckhorn, Pam Maario, you can go way back, Martinez. You can go back on that, and for African people, you can look around and see the quality of life never changes for us, never changes, it gets progressively worse. Incarceration and gentrification. And this city, since it's been formed in eighteen forty-nine, from Village of Tampa to City of Tampa, treat African people bad, build structures over our grave sites, act like they don't know it's there, all that's going on. But it's time for a change. African people have to wake up. We have to wake up and understand that it, we, we just can't, you know, white people have to understand, we're just not going to accept this kind of treatment that we receive on a daily basis from just every walk of life, everywhere you go, discrimination, hatred, black hatred is just so strong. If you're downtown at the courthouse, go down to the courthouse and what you see, mostly black people, mostly Spanish people, all day long. Go to the child support office, what do you see? And most of it is because the main issue haven't been addressed, and that main issue is reparations. We can't keep coming down here begging for housing, begging to stop police violence, begging to stop police brutality, begging to stop bicycle stops, begging for our kids not to get kicked out of school, begging, like a begging race. No, we need our reparations, and we need to be treated fairly and properly, that's what we need. The issue have to be reparations on a major scale, on a major scale. It just can't be, oh, y'all gonna get some housing, y'all gonna get some food stamps, that's not reparations. The issue have to be reparations for African people, and this treatment, it have to stop. It really have to stop. African people can't live under that kind of pressure, day after day after day after day, living like wild animals. Twenty-twenty, it's time for a change.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Jacob Brunell, uh, two nine one eight West Kennedy Boulevard. Thank you for the opportunity to, to let me address you this morning, along with my colleague, Mike Peterson. I currently serve as the Governmental Affairs Manager for Greater Tampa Realtors, and I'm here today on behalf of our members. As an association, more than twelve thousand members spanning Tampa Bay area, we have many members who li- work and live in the city of Tampa. Every day, our members go to work preserving and protecting and advancing the right to real property for all. In this regard, we would like to voice our support of the proposal for an ordinance regarding the prohibition of non-motor vehicles from parking on any city street or property except for the purposes of loading and unloading. We believe that section fifteen dash eight-six will help preserve property values, limit noise nuisances, and ensure the safety of the community. Thank you again for the opportunity to address our support, and we look forward to advancing these proposed changes.
Good morning, Geraldine Rogers Toons. The purpose of roundabouts is to reduce the number of serious crashes and fatalities. Roundabouts are not the most pedestrian and cyclist-friendly roads. Florida is one of the most dangerous places in the country when it comes to deadly crashes involving pedestrians, cyclists, and motor vehicles. A study conducted by Smart Growth America found that Tampa Bay ranked number seven on the pedestrian danger index. Even more concerning is three roads in Tampa Bay are the deadliest in the entire state, and no roundabouts were installed at those intersections. The proposed intersections for the Thirty-Fourth Street Roundabout Project isn't included in the twenty most dangerous roads in Tampa. There are twenty-seven roundabouts and circles in Tampa according to a City of Tampa website. However, ten of the roundabouts and circles are on private roads which have limited motorist access. A disproportionate number of roundabouts are in East Tampa in comparison to other areas in the city. National statistics show the number of crashes increase at intersections with roundabouts. Generally, motorist does, generally, motorist does not like roundabouts and are apprehensive driving through them, and some statistics show a reduction in motorist use on roads with roundabouts. Why do this administration think it is okay to endanger the safety of our children by putting roundabouts in close proximity to elementary schools and adjacent to a park? This administration should take into consideration the high concentration of kids commuting on Thirty-Fourth Street. Failure to consider children's safety is negligence. In twenty-eighteen, there were ninety-four crashes in East Tampa on Forty-First Street between Bush Boulevard and Hillsborough Avenue, and fifty-three of those crashes were at intersections with roundabouts. This statistic doesn't include crashes at Bush Boulevard and Hillsborough Avenue intersections on Forty-First Street. In twenty-nineteen, there were eighty-six crashes in that same area, and thirty-five crashes at intersections with roundabouts. The information provided for twenty-nineteen crashes is incomplete. All roundabouts accomplish its purposes, excuse me, are roundabouts accomplishing its purposes. What safety measures will be implemented to safeguard kids, other pedestrians, cyclists from injury on Thirty-Fourth Street? Is the proposed Thirty-Fourth Street project in compliance with the Imagine Twenty-Forty Comprehensive Plan policies? And you know, that's so important, because you all are supposed to consult with the school district, I would think the Parks and Recreation Department would also be a part of that process.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the Fire Department, and I really thank you all for listening and hearing, and I hope you take it to heart that there really is an issue for coming.
Thank you very much, ma'am, we appreciate your time.
And may I submit this as well?
You may.
I'm reviewing some information that...
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good morning, I'm Bishop Michelle B. Paddy, PO Box forty-six twenty-four, Tampa, Florida. You all wonder why we come down here week after week, we seem like we're angry, we seem like we're mad. Well, we have just good reason to be so. In Friday's paper, there was an article written about Fair Oaks, and nowhere in this article stated that there would be a date, place, or time for the, uh, meeting that you all directed the CRA to put together, a community meeting. However, by Friday afternoon, there was a flyer, uh, people was getting email, very limited people, uh, getting email that there was a meeting that was going to be held on January the fourteenth, that they did, they were did it in such a rush until it has the date of twenty nineteen. This gave us less time, you, you don't even have fourteen days. Whenever there's a meeting in the community, the communities are given thirty to forty-five days notice. Here we see, this is not even fourteen days. Now, when the meeting, when people don't show up at the meeting, then the people are able to say, the community don't care. When you put this type of shenanigan, this, this is appalling to the black community, we're always being shafted. Now, on my talk show, and there was nothing in the Urban Paper, which is the black newspaper, Florida Center Bulletin, there was nothing on W-T-M-P, uh, I raised alarm on Saturday morning because I received a flyer that morning, people called me that night at eleven. Councilman Goos himself called my show, saying he was not aware of this meeting, and of course, it was too short notice. I want to thank Janelle, who works for the mayor, uh, the community liaison, who has rolled it back to the twenty-third, and now the proper notice is going out to the community concerning this. People don't understand, it's black children that are being murdered, it is black children that are being incarcerated. This is not my... This is not my first time here for this rodeo. I've been advocate for the parks and recs. You could go back to your minutes in 2011 where the fees was too high to accommodate low-income families and I came down with Brother Jarvis and others and we was able to successfully get this done. There was $33.5 million spent on Judy B. Lane. I know people say that that was the BP money, TIF money, but all the money was taxpayers' money. So if we could spend $33.5 million on Judy B. Lane, $200,000, that's a Band-Aid. We don't want $200,000 to put paint and cover things over. It need to be torn down, it need to be rebuilt because it is utilized. Children go there, senior citizen, and it is a huge voting place. So what we're gonna ask that you all get together, Strass, whether, you could talk to her because he had talked about the late David Strass, I'm doing something out there. You all can get this done and we would like for it to be done.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Is anyone else here for public comment? Anyone else here? Go ahead, sir.
Travis Alamin, I would really like to just give away my three minutes to Ms. Michelle Paddy. Is that possible?
Is Mr. Shelby, I don't think that's permissible, is it?
No, that's only permissible during public hearings, not during public comments.
Okay. I mean, if you have another 45 seconds, I have no, if there's something you got to finish, I got.
No, no, no. I just want her to finish.
Forty-five second?
Yeah, I mean, if you've got another minute, in other words, a minute's not going to kill anybody.
No, thank you so much. But in all fairness, we would like the same consideration that is given to the whole city to be done in East Tampa. I don't for the life of me understand why it cannot be done. The people that you have in place, the CRAs was put there to help the community. It is not doing that job. It is actually hurting the community and we're here to counsel, not pointing fingers, but asking that we have our fair share and that our children, our seniors, everyone be taken care of respectfully. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Shelby?
Yes, thank you, council. Good morning and a happy new year. I just want to be able to address council regarding this flyer that was handed out regarding the Fair Oaks Community Center Community Feedback Meeting, which is coming up, or is presently set for Tuesday, January 14th, this coming Tuesday. That's before your CRA meeting. In talking with Ms. Zelman, who's present, I don't believe this is a notice meeting of the CRA board. I do know this is not a notice meeting of the Tampa City Council. So I'm going to remind you, please, that if you do attend any of these meetings, that are not notice meetings of either the CRA or the Tampa City Council, that you can observe, but please do not participate because if it is a violation of the sunshine law, the sanction is to actually undo and make void anything that comes before the city council or the CRA that would have been discussed at that meeting. So just for purposes of that and future reference, just to ensure that when you do attend these meetings, that you do observe, but please refrain from participating.
Councilman Goode, and then Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Shelby, I heard about the flyer, I got several calls Saturday reference to it and I called in, didn't know about the flyer being sent out, but I did contact Janelle McGregor and asked her to get with the proper people in reference to noticing that meeting. And she called me back later in the week and said it had been pushed back to the 23rd. I don't know if she's gonna publicly notice, but I know she said they're gonna do a bunch of advertising as we relate to the meeting on the 23rd.
And to remind council that just because a meeting is publicized does not mean it complies with the notice requirements and the other requirements of the public meetings law. So the fact that perhaps the CRA manager and the Parks and Recreation Department do publicize it, if one city council member is there and there's no other member of the same collegial board, whether it's a CRA or whatever, then you can participate. But if there are two or more members of the same collegial board, the sunshine law then kicks into effect and applies. So that's the distinction. So I thank you. Again, if council wishes to, per your rules or the CRA, to set these meetings, just advise myself or Ms. Zelman for the CRA and we can assist in making sure that all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Were any other board members gonna attend the meeting?
Well, I turned 42 that evening, so I'll be with my family, so I'll probably be there.
So I think we need to go ahead and publicly notice it, Mr. Shelby.
Well, that's, well, the thing is, it goes beyond public notice. There is also certain other requirements that have to be met. One of them is also minutes being taken and the like. And also, if it's going to be something that needs to be posted downstairs and also put on the city's website, if it's going to be a motion of council to make it a special meeting, then it should be by a motion and vote of council. Council members, you can, there are community meetings. You're elected officials, you represent the city, you can go to any public meeting you want. The concern is that if you discuss it amongst yourselves or you communicate with one another over anything that can foreseeably come before the CRA or city council, you jeopardize that which you're going to be voting on. That's the sanction. So that's why we want to try to avoid that.
And before we go to Councilman Dingfelder and Councilman Carlson, Ms. Zelman, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I don't have it in front of me, but you have an adopted CRA policy as well that talks about, for instance, when CRA board members attend the community advisory committee meetings, the policy is for you, again, to observe but not participate because, again, they're gonna be discussing things that will then come before the board for a vote. And my recollection is that the purpose of this meeting was to solicit input from the community about what they want to happen with the Fair Oaks Community Center. So it really seems appropriate for everyone involved, for you all to listen, because, again, then those recommendations in theory will come before the CRA board at which time you can discuss them and vote on them. So that really is the better way to move forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Dingfelder and Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna respond to, Councilman Goode. I'll put it on my calendar and I hope to attend totally in a listening capacity. And I think that that's appropriate, that the city administration can orchestrate the meeting, the CRA staff can orchestrate the meeting. We don't necessarily have to talk, but I think it's a good idea to go and listen if our schedules accommodate it. Mr. Chairman, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Later in the month.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carlson.
Two things real fast. I think all of us, or majority of us, went to the housing conference in East Tampa and there were a whole bunch of staff members, there were people with booths, but there were very few people from the community. And we need to figure out, as a city, how do we reach out to the people in each community that we're trying to reach to make sure that we get people out? If we have this event and all the staff shows up and five people from the community shows up, then we will have failed. And that, this is CRA and we can talk about the CRA meetings, but that gets to the outsourced agreement with the city also, is that one of the things we have to hold them accountable for is communicating effectively, get people there. The second thing is that this flyer says, "The East Tampa CRA manager and the Parks and Recreation Department invite you." My recollection is that the idea for this event was Councilman Goode's and the CRA board voted unanimously to hold this event. Marty, is there a legal reason why it wouldn't say that the CRA board invited?
I'm not privy to the vote of the CRA regarding setting this.
We didn't set the date specifically and so the date and the promotion of it did not come before Councilman Goode's or the board, but the idea for the meeting, am I wrong? Didn't it come from that meeting? You suggested that?
Well, and we suggested it could be before February because we said, well, it was quicker. So the date they set was that date, but I thought that they said it was too short coming out of the Christmas and New Year's break.
It could be that we're not allowed to speak to each other, speak publicly, but it seems like if the public knew that city council, I would recommend putting city council sitting as a CRA board, if they knew that it was something that we had suggested, just like if the mayor proposes something, it says the mayor invites you, then we might be able to get more people out and have more participation. Anyway, just an idea.
That may be the case, councilman. The only concern that I have is this was not set the date. See, part of the notice requirement is to set the time, date, place, and location. So if this was by a motion of council to direct the administration or the CRA manager to do it, then in effect, I understand why you have this concern, but I think it's an accurate, it sounds like an accurate representation of what CRA's direction was. The concern that I have is that if this actually listed the city council or the CRA on it, there would be a perception that it would be a meeting of the city council or the CRA which would then require the public meetings law to kick in and also that there would be expectations created in the community that probably would not be able to be fulfilled if you don't follow the procedures.
Just a last thought, we've all said that we need to get public input on CRA and everything else and I think we've got to figure out a mechanism to notice and get minutes and all that because we've got to be able to engage in the community. It can't be that difficult. We've got to be able to make sure we follow the rules, but also go out in the community and we should be doing more of these. It's difficult, as people say here when they come up, it's difficult for people to take off work to come in here. And so when we go out to the community, we really need to hear their feedback and ideally it would be properly noticed so that we could speak. Thank you.
And Ms. Zelman?
Yeah, and again, just to reiterate, and I think Mr. Shelby said it well, we don't want to create the implication that this is a notice meeting of either the city council or the CRA board. Again, it was intended to be a community meeting to get input and that's why, again, our suggestion is that you all listen but not speak because whatever, my understanding is whatever is decided at the meeting will then come before the CRA board for a vote. So I think in terms of the way the invitation was worded, it's accurate, I mean, you could change it to say, "By motion of the CRA board, the city, the East Tampa CRA manager and the Parks Department invite you," but I don't think you want to create the perception that this will be either a CRA board meeting or a city council meeting being conducted at this meeting.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I attend CRA meetings, I tend to listen to what the people have to say. If there's any point where a motion is made or a vote is taken on anything that's brought before the CRA board, I have looked at the people and said, "I'm sorry, I must leave this room at this time." I am there only solely to hear what the community has to say and I would like to advise other council members to please do that also.
Thank you. And I'll say from my end, I've probably had in three years of been on council, I think like about 20 community meetings or town halls in my district and the way, and I usually get decent turnout. And the way that I usually do it is through social media, Facebook is very well used by people, Nextdoor. I know, and Mr. Shelby is grimacing, I know it can be a public records nightmare. I know it can be a public records nightmare, but that is a great way to get onto your community and reach people. And for a couple of ones, I've even done the old-fashioned door-to-door way. But I think social media and Nextdoor are just the two best ways that I always have. So just my thoughts. Any other discussions on this issue? Okay, thank you very much. We knew, next move forward, are there any requests by the public for reconsideration of legislative matters? Okay. There being none, we move next to committee reports, consent agenda. Item number two, is anyone here for item number two?
Good morning. Justin Vaskey, Legal Department. Before city council is the first reading of an ordinance that amends section 2-280 of the city code. The ordinance increases the threshold amount for which work orders are approved by city council and clarifies that said work orders for professional services as defined by the Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act. I am here and city staff is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder.
Been having some chats with Mr. Bennett as well as relevant staff members about this. Effectively, what this does is it raises the delegation limit, I believe, Justin, you can correct me, from currently, is it 50?
Yes, that is correct.
$50,000 up to $150,000 for the CCNA contractual services items.
Right.
Mr. Bennett and I had conversation about it. My question to staff was, where did we pull the $150,000 number from, number one? Number two, I confirm that the purchasing delegation from this council is 100,000. And what I suggested, and I'll suggest to this board unless I hear good reason otherwise, is that we be consistent with our purchasing policy and modify this slightly to 100,000 instead of 150,000, just so that way, like I said, we'll be consistent with our, you know, with both policies. So anyway, I didn't know if you had any response, or if staff was here with any additional response. I believe Mr. Bennett and I were in agreement on that and I'll have to double check, Mike.
Well, it's something, I've talked to Mike Chuckin about it and it's something that they would look into if that's the direction that city council wanted to go with. And I would suggest that if that's where city council wants to go, we would delay this ordinance for two weeks while we look into it and then see if we come back. Now, I want to make one point. In the future, if purchasing were to increase their threshold amounts, we would also then want to have the same kind of synergy with this work order.
And I probably wouldn't have any issue with that. I just think that consistency is probably a good idea to, that way we can keep in our mind what our delegation to the staff is and that it's the same.
Right. So I'm just making the point that in the future, if purchasing goes up, we should be able to go up as well.
If there's no objection, Mr. Chairman, with staff's recommendation, I'd move this to defer this for two weeks.
Okay. We have a motion and any other discussion by Councilman Dingfelder or second by Councilman Goode's, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that would be January 23rd.
Thank you. And is that, this type of ordinance, is it just a one-reading ordinance or a two-reading?
Two readings.
Two readings.
Two readings, a public hearing, that's slated.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we move to item number three, if anyone is here for that.
Good morning, council. To One Dampeny Planning and Development. This item is before you for first reading, consideration, and vote. This item is the July text amendments and we're workshop back in October and staff is available for any questions.
Any questions? There being none, is there anyone here from the public here to comment on item number three? If so, please come forward. Okay. Motion to close by Councilman Niskalko, a second by Councilman Goode's, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, sure. Do you feel comfortable reading item number three?
Sure.
Thank you.
And just as a summary to anybody who's watching, we've had this issue about skateboards in residential areas and I think that's the main impetus behind this minor ordinance change. With that, I'll read the following ordinance for first reading, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida relating to skateboard ramps, cemetery definition, and general corrections to zoning use dimensional and parking tables, making revisions to City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 27, zoning and land development, amending section 27-43 definitions, amending section 27-156, official schedule of district regulations, amending section 27-184, official schedule of permitted principal accessory and special uses, required off-street parking ratios by uses, creating section 27-290.9, skateboard ramps repealing ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing effectively.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, second reading and adoption will be held on February 6, 2020 at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we move to committee, or strike that consent agenda and I believe item 29 has been pulled, so Councilman Niskalko, whenever your committee comes up. Councilman Citro, public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move items number four through six.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, Councilman Goode's, Parks Rec. We have a motion by Councilman Goode's, a second by Councilman Niskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move items nine through 12.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move items 13 through 15. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Niskalko, I believe, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Carlson. I'd like to.
Mr. Carlson. I have refused to like 20. I don't know how to vote.
A separate vote, please.
Separate vote. So I'd like to move items 16 through 19 and items 21 through 23.
Second. Motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And did you want to move, well, before you do that, you want to announce, is going to be so? Oh, yeah. As related to item 20, upon review with this particular item, it appears that my wife has a relationship, a minor relationship with this organization, which upon review with myself and Mr. Shelby, I believe may create an appearance of conflict of interest and therefore I would abstain and file Form 8B with the clerk.
Yes, we have a, I guess, if you want to.
I'd like to move item number 20.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Niskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't care, but you can judge me for that.
Thank you.
Councilman. Councilman Niskalko.
I move items 24 through 27.
We have a motion by Councilman...
I'm sorry, and 28.
8, okay. Motion by Councilman Niskalko, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we move to our...
Item number 30 through 31.
Okay, let, any, a second for that?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, if you are here today to testify or speak on a quasi-judicial matter or hearing, please, if you would, stand if you're able to do so, raise your right hand and prepare to be sworn in. Okay, and just to let City staff know, we'll be doing our staff reports at 10:30 as opposed to 10:45. Yes, sir?
Chairman, I believe it's in order, but I may ask that to move them up too, because it's past 9:30, so we can open up the remaining 32 through 41 for the 9:30s also.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda. Who would like to second that?
Second.
A second by Councilman Niskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's begin with item number 30.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, City Council members. Jan McLean with the Office of the City Attorney. Here for on the second reading of proposed revisions to Chapter 26, the administrative portions of our code regarding water and wastewater. There are various revisions that we are proposing with regard to connection easements. They're primarily clarifications that have been needed as time passes. We were here on first reading in December, and I had no questions. But I'm here as is our Chief Engineer for the Water Department here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 30?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Niskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Goode's, do you feel comfortable, sir, reading item 30?
Item 2019-8, C26, those are presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida relating to utilities, water commitment, connection, or service, making provisions to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinance, Chapter 26 Utilities, Article 2 Water, Article 3 Wastewater, amending Section 26-74, application for water commitment, connection, or service. Execution of service commitment considered contract between customer and city. Amending Section 26-76, separate connection required. Amending Section 26-94, private fire connection systems generally amending Section 26-96, requirements for fire hydrants creating Section 26-100. Water facility ownership amending Section 26-100 through and including 26-115. Reserve amending Section 26-2424. Extinctions or improvements provided by applicant. Repleting all ordinance or parts of the ordinance in conflict with providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode's, a second by Councilman Niskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Wait, second reading.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you. If you, it was second reading. Thank you.
They put it out, my chair was correct. You want to fall back?
Thank you. Okay, we need move next to item 31.
Morning, Council members. Dennis Fernandez, Architecture Review and Historic Preservation Manager. Here this morning to present the adware and tax exemption for property located at 5102 North Central Avenue. I have just a few slides for you. The arrow marks the location of the contributing structure. It is a structure that was constructed in 1915. It is located in the Seminole Heights Local Historic and National Register District. See the subject property in the green box just to the north of Fieldsboro High School. We're fortunate to have a historic picture from 1923 of the structure. And you see it there in its original condition.
We skip one. We skip one. 31.
Are you here for 31?
This is 31.
You're 31, you're a little older than 31, but...
Okay.
This is number 31.
Okay, continue.
This is a picture of the structure as it was in its condition pre-rehabilitation in 2016. This is an addition that was approved through the Architecture Review Commission as part of the rehabilitation process. And you see that in its completed form. Another photo from the rear. See, this would be the area where the connector and the addition were added. That's the after picture. The owners worked diligently to save the tree in the backyard as well. These are some of the windows that were salvaged and reused in the new addition. There are some photographs of that after picture. Some of the restorative work that went into the project. It's an example of one of the doors of the transom that had been closed over and was reestablished. Some of the after photos of the interior of the structure showing the addition and its compatibility to the original structure. And some of the details that were done as far as remilling doors and finding hardware that matched. This application is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. In reviewing the project, it did meet the established guidelines by the Department of State, and the improvements do qualify under the Historic Preservation Property Tax Exemption Ordinance as presented. The ARC do recommend approval on November 4th for this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council?
Second.
Oh, got to do public comment first. Anybody here to publicly comment on item number 31?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Niskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilman Niskalko, do you mind, sir, taking out item 31?
I'd be honored to. It's a great house, and they've put a lot of money and love into this home. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance approving an historic preservation property tax exemption application relative to the restoration, renovation, or rehabilitation of certain property owned by John and Vivian Tennyson, located at 5102 North Central Avenue, Tampa, Florida, in the Seminole Heights Local Historic District, based upon certain findings, providing for notice to the property appraiser of Fieldsboro County, providing for severability, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Niskalko, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Or actually, strike that, I apologize. Beginning of the year.
Second, it's a new year.
Thank you very much. Next, we move to item 32.
Good morning, once again, council members. Dennis Fernandez, Architecture Review and Historic Preservation Manager. Very happy to be here this morning on second reading for the local landmark designation recommendation for the Junta Homestead and Farm. I have a PowerPoint, I believe, that could facilitate the presentation. There we go. We were here in December for first reading. We appreciate your support on that particular reading. And just to refamiliarize you with the property location, the property is located at 2401 East 11th Avenue. That is in the boundaries of the local historic district. However, the National Landmark District bisects the property. That was one of the reasons that we felt the local landmarking was necessary to bring additional protection to this particularly rare resource. See some of the early city maps. These are the 1929 Sanborn maps showing the Ebor City area. The subject property, of course, located on the lower right with the star. You notice in that area, the density as compared to other areas of Ebor is very low. That's because this area was primarily used for farming and dairy production. This is a great panorama of Ebor City in 1907. Just looking at this 20 years earlier, this would have been all scrubland and no structures. You have the economic engine of Ebor City in full capacity at this point. And the lure of good salaries and good living conditions were attracting people from Cuba, Spain, and of course Sicily to this area. The Cubans and Spaniards mainly dealt in the cigar production industry, but many of the Sicilians dealt in what they knew best, which was farming and dairy production. This is an area which we believe is in East Ebor. See some large factory buildings in the background. This would have been typical of the East Ebor area. This is a celery farm. There are many, many types of farms in the area. The celery production was at a premium and was desirable all the way up the northeastern coast of the United States. In 1907, Salvatore and Vittoria Junta immigrated from Santo Stefano, Chisequina, Sicily, to Ebor City in the hopes of finding better wages and making their way for their family to have success. Like many other Sicilian immigrants, they settled in East Ebor and began to do what they knew best, which was farming. They could only bring two of their children with them. They had to leave the other three children back in Sicily. So Salvatore returned in 1911 to bring those three children back. By the 1920s, the family was starting to realize success. They were working in the cigar industry, working various jobs to earn money. And they began to purchase property and where they were able to build a house in 1924. Unfortunately, in 1930, Salvatore passed, and his children began to work the land and to see to the family's needs. This is an aerial of the Junta Homestead and Farm. It includes the main house, a greenhouse, the farming field, the chicken coop, a garage, and an orchard. Fronts 11th Avenue, bounded by 24th and 25th Streets and 10th Avenue on the south. This is the house that was built in 1924 by Giovanni Fonte for the Junta family. It is an excellent example of a two-story bungalow with a portica share and has many of the details that we find characteristic during this period of construction. The garage was built in 1951, still resides today. Serves not only to facilitate the farming production, but also some of the businesses which the family had engaged in over the years. See some of the different phases that the property has gone through over the years. It's been in constant farming production since the property was acquired by the Junta's. Today, Vicky and Tessie Junta still maintain that tradition. Along with their two children that they brought, Salvatore and Vittoria brought their most cherished possession, which was their seeds of their produce that they grew in Italy. They grew these throughout the years and continue to grow, or continue to be grown today. They include radises, watercress, parsley, mint, collard greens, mustard greens, cucutsas, cardon, artichokes, carrots, beets, and Ghee.
Thank you for saying cucuta. Might be the first in these chambers.
Squash. Some wonderful pictures of the farm and the buildings that support the farm. Moving to its qualifications for local landmark status. Within the property itself, the 1924 house is an excellent example of a two-story camelback bungalow with a portica share. The Junta Homestead and Farm continues to convey its historic purpose and appearance. And this area, which once was plentiful with Sicilian homesteads and farms, now serves, this serves as the last example of that in the city. It's an excellent and rare example of an early Sicilian immigrant farm in Ebor City. The site extends beyond just the ownership of the Junta's. Prior to that, Dr. Douglas, the wealthy landowner and farmer, produced his celery crops on this land. When he began to sell off his land, that's when the Junta's were able to start to build their homestead. The Junta Homestead is entirely included in the local boundaries of the Ebor City Local Historic District, but not within the National Historic Landmark District. This designation provides additional element of protection to the property. The property owners have requested this designation. And the HPC did recommend for local landmark designation on September 17th, 2019, under the categories of agriculture, ethnic heritage, architecture, community planning and development, and historic archaeology. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, I'm so excited. Junta family, thank you for doing this, Dennis. Thanks for bringing this forward. This is, this is an amazing cultural asset for our community. Over the holidays, had a little time to do some extra reading. And I'm sure Charlie and some others have read, but I was reading Dr. Marmino's, George Posetta's book on Ebor City, which is amazing. And it speaks specifically about Santo Stefano and how so much of our community started in Santo Stefano, Sicily. And then, and then Ferdi Pacheco, I read his book over the holidays too. Ferdi Pacheco's book on Ebor City, which is the more humorous side of Ebor City, but also very, very interesting. So I urge everybody to read, read either of those books, because we have such a rich, diverse community. Many years ago, I lived in Orlando. There's not a whole lot of difference between Tampa and Orlando in terms of size and that sort of thing. And I don't mean to slam Orlando, but, but, but the difference is, is our historic past and our cultural diversity really makes Tampa so unique and special. And I hope we continue to support that over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Niskalko.
Well, I especially appreciate this, being a son of a Sicilian immigrant. My dad did not come with the first wave of immigrants in the early 1900s or late 1900s. He came in 1981, but he came from a neighboring town called Alessandria de la Roca. And many Tampa families came from there, or Santo Stefano, or even a town called Chan Chan. So it's like from here to Lutz or here to Brandon, distance. But it's nice to see that we're appreciating, preserving the history that's beyond what people think that Ebor City was only the cigar factories. You know, they're going into the farming and other trades that, that the immigrants had, had taken up. So I'm, it's really an honor to support this today and, and preserving something that's so important and that more people in Tampa really need to know, because it's, it's going back in time. When you drive past that property, it's something, a window into, you know, what it was over 100 years ago in this area, since it's preserved as it is. So I'm, I'm happy to support this, and I think it's very, very significant and important.
Anyone else? Councilman?
Thank you. Just like the passage, like was said by former council members who spoke. Ebor City, in fact, had various feed stores for animals. One was Lopez Feed on Broadway, East 7th Avenue. One was Gonzales Feed on 26th and 15th. The other was Rex Rodriguez on 15th and MLK now. And it was amazing how many people had horses, cows, pigs, goats, everything in the backyard. And the backyards weren't any, any bigger than from that podium to here. It was very small. But everybody survived, everybody got their own eggs. Everybody was happy because they had, like John said, porches. But we had invented air-conditioned television. So everybody knew everybody. Now no one knows anyone, and everybody's not as happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I've, I've said before, the Junta sisters were nice enough to give me a tour a couple of years ago. I was very impressed, and it tells a side of the history of Ebor and our community that most people don't know. And it's a really important property in its entirety to preserve. And thank you to them for being so generous and spending all their... them for being so generous and spending all their time and effort and, and donating the resources to do that. So of course, I'm gonna support this any way I can. I just have a question. The last I talked to them, the, the, still the long-term sustainability was up in the air. Do we know, I know the county, the, the History Center and others were talking, do we know? The problem with, with, with all these buildings like the, the Jackson House and all these important historical structures, we have to find the money to, to maintain them and operate them in the future, and maybe there's, maybe we can sit down with you another time and figure out, how do we work on the long-term sustainability of protecting all these? Because as my colleague said, this is what makes our community different and distinctive. We talked about cigar factories. We talked about Jackson House, other kinds of venues, but we need to find the, the money somehow to make them sustainable in the future. Any, any answer on this one?
Well, I, I know that the, the Junta family has been working on long-term plans with the property to allow it to continue to, you know, inspire and educate our community. I think this is part, this was part of the plan. They continue to work with other professionals on mechanisms, and we can, I'm certainly happy to meet with you.
It's been a long-term process, so thank you again to the family for your dedication in preserving not just your family's history, but this important part of our community's history.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. And, and one thing I'd add there, I, I know Councilman Dingfelder mentioned Dr. Marmino and others there. I, I would encourage everyone to, you know, brush up on their Tampa history. We've got some great historians, people like Dr. Marmino, Cantor Brown, if anyone's heard of Cantor Brown, or Dr. Robert Engels, who teaches at University of South Florida. Just a lot of neat stuff out there to learn about from a variety of cultures. But Councilman Citro, if you want to take this one, sir?
Mr. Chair.
I, I would, thank you. If anybody is here to speak on item number 32, please come forward. Motion to close by Councilman Meniscalco, second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a grandson of the Sicilian immigrant and who is a love, has a great love for Ybor City, I am honored to read this substitute ordinance for being considered the second reading and adoption ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, designating the Junta Homestead and Farm located at 2401 East 11th Avenue, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in Section 3 hereof, as a local landmark, providing for the appeal of ordinance in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
And Councilman Citro.
Congratulations to the Junta Sister, thank you very much for preserving this great piece of history of Ybor City and the city of Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move to item 33.
Mary Samaniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Items number 33 through 38 are all second readings from applications that were heard at your December 12th City Council Evening. All required changes have been made or at the City Clerk's Office. I ask the applicants, when their item comes up, to come forward and address counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council and council. My name is John Grandoff. My address is Suite 3700 Bank of America Plaza. I'm here on behalf of Safeguard Storage, and I respectfully request your approval of this item this morning on the second reading.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for counsel? Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Is anyone here to speak on item number 33? If so, please come forward. Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Councilman Miranda, do you mind reading?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Mulway, item number 33, file number REZ-19-73, a substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 1101, 1115, East Hillsborough Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification SHCI, Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive, SHPD, Seminole Heights Plan Development, Air Conditioned Storage and Private Recreation Facility.
Do we have, we have a second, our motion by Councilman?
Providing an effective date.
Providing an effective date.
We have, we have a, a motion by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Citro. Please record your vote.
Motion carried with Meniscalco, Vieira, and Goots voting no.
Thank you. And now do we have to move?
Move the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Check it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman, or Miranda, second by Councilman Citro, and do we just do a voice on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Goots, Meniscalco, and?
Vieira.
Vieira, no.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we next move to item number 34. Anyone is here for 34?
Yes, of course. There are, there are activists in the community who are against self-storage facilities in general, and to my knowledge, there's no prohibition against them on the books. And I actually have one right next to where I live, and it's, I'm perfectly fine with it. But if folks want to limit those in the future, I would encourage them to get, to send us proposed ordinances and examples of other cities that deal with them.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Item number 34, if anyone is here for 34.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council. My name is John Grandoff. My address is Suite 3700 Bank of America Plaza. I'm here this morning on behalf of the petitioner, Moffett Cancer Center. I respectfully request your approval on second reading.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Grandoff? Okay. Anyone here from the public here to speak on item number 34? If so, please come forward. Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Meniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, do you mind, sir, reading 34?
File number REZ-1984, ordinance being presented for second reading, adoption ordinance, rezoning property in the general vicinity of 10901 Malcolm McKinley Drive in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification IH Industrial Heavy to PD Plan Development Hospital, Clinic, Hotel, Motel, providing effective date.
Sorry. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Next, thank you, sir. Next, we move to item 35.
Good morning, Council, Steve Michalini. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. You may recall that this was voted on unanimously last time, and respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Is anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 35? Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Meniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, do you, sir, mind reading item 35?
Mr. Chairman. An ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 611 and 613 Danube Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classifications RS-60 residential single-family to RS-50 residential single-family, providing effective date.
Sorry. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Next, we move to item 36.
Steve Michalini, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. Again, this was received and voted on unanimously by the City Council, and respectfully request your approval.
Any questions for Mr. Michalini? Okay, there being none. Is anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 36? If so, please come forward. Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Meniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Goots, do you, sir, mind taking item number 36?
File number REZ-1998, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Notice rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3515 West Eagle Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RS-60 residential single-family to RS-50 residential single-family, providing effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Goots, a second by Councilman Meniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, sir. Next is item number 37. Anyone here for 37?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jorge Castro. I'm applying for, for change this morning on 37. And I'm going to ask you for, for vote, for approval.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone have questions for Mr. Castro? Okay. Anyone here from the public here to speak on item number 37? Motion to close yet again by Councilman Miranda, seconded yet again by Councilman Meniscalco, all in, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Councilman Meniscalco, do you mind taking item 37?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 4201 East 12th Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RM-16 residential multifamily to CG commercial general, providing an effective date.
Motion by Councilman Meniscalco, second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote. And it's not?
Not active. Beat Sandy to draw there.
Well, well, well.
I'm missing one vote. Motion carried with Carson being absent at vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we move to item 38. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Randy Cohen here on behalf of Highwoods Properties, the owner and applicant of this rezoning. We request your approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Is anyone here to comment on item number 38? If so, please come forward. Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, intercepted for the second by Councilman Citro, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Citro, if you don't mind, is it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. An ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 4,600 West Cypress Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described, excuse me, in Section 1 from zoning district classification OP-1 Office Professional 1 to PD Plan Development Business Professional Office, Bank, Drive-In, Restaurant, College, and School Strip Shopping Center with all CG uses, recreational facility, commercial indoor, hotel and motel, and principal provide, parking, providing an effective date.
Motion by Councilman Citro, second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote. Thank you. Okay, next move to item number 39.
Good morning. Julie Hardy, Legal Department. I'm respectfully, respectfully requesting that counsel approve this scrivener's error ordinance.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 39? If so, please come forward. Motion to close by Councilman Meniscalco, second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Miranda, do you, sir, mind taking item number 39?
Item number 39, file number VAC-19-22. Being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-140 ordained by the City Council, the city of Tampa, Florida, on October 17, 2019, for scrivener's error, providing severability, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Meniscalco. Please record your vote. Okay. Next, we move to item number 40.
Julie Hardy, Legal Department. Items number 40 and 41 are second readings for vacations, and the petitioners are here to answer any questions, and I am also here to answer any legal questions.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Adam Carnegie with Stand Tech, representing the Hillsborough County Aviation Authority. Respectfully request your approval of the ordinance vacating these streets. Thank you. Can answer any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Okay. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number 40? If so, please come forward. Motion to close by Councilman Goots, second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, do you, sir, mind taking item number 40?
Sure. File number VAC-19-23, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning portions of right-of-way known as West Shore, Boulevard, West Curtis Avenue, West Cayuga Street, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Trask, Trask Street, Orient Street, North Renali Drive, West Ohio Avenue, and Dazo Avenue, lying south of Hillsborough Avenue, north of the Tampa Bay Boulevard, west of Air Cargo Road, and east of Tampa International Airport in the city of Tampa, Florida, Hillsborough, Florida. The same being more fully described in Section 1 hereof, subject to certain easement reservation, reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Motion by Councilman Carlson, second by Councilman Meniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, gosh. Okay. Next move to item number 41.
Matt Poling, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard. I'm an attorney at Trent, and I represent the applicant, and we request your approval.
Any questions? Okay, anyone here from the audience to speak on item number 41? Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Meniscalco, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Goots, do you, sir, mind taking item 41?
File number VAC-20-01, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, known as vacating, closing, and discontinuing, and abandoning right-of-way known as Gulf Avenue, lying south of 10th Avenue and east of 62nd Street and south of CXX Railroad in the standard railroad in the south, the subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida. The same being more fully described in Section 1 hereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Motion by Councilman Goots, second by Councilman Meniscalco. Okay. We're, in a couple of minutes, we're gonna go to our 10:30 staff report, so I would ask that all city staff that's gonna be here for 10:30, please come forward, or might just be in the audience, et cetera. But let's go ahead. I see on item number 43, this cannot be heard, there's no affidavit, it was filed. May I have a motion to remove him? Motion by Councilman Meniscalco, second by Councilman Citro, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, let's go ahead and go to, for staff reports, a little bit early, so we begin at the other hearing, that'll overtake that. For number four, I don't see Chief Nick here, so let's go ahead and move to number 45. Ms. Kurt, if you don't mind, ma'am?
Thank you. Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I'm here on this item regarding leaf blowers. The request from City Council was twofold. One was to present an ordinance, an ordinance language for consideration regarding limiting the hours of operation for leaf blowers to be consistent with what we allow for construction. So I have previously submitted to you some language to do that. As you will recall, you currently have a noise ordinance. You currently exempt out all lawn equipment from the noise ordinance, so there are no limitations. To be consistent with how we handle construction, the way that this language reads is that if the noise is being generated within 1,500 feet of property zone residential, which is about 150-foot lots, then these are the limits of the hours, between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Sunday. The second part of the motion was to strengthen the language regarding leaves being blown on the street. I had not previously submitted language to you on that. I submitted a memo clarifying to you that it is already prohibited, but in speaking with the maker of the motion, his intent was actually to call out leaf blowers expressly in that section. So if you would like to consider it, I have some language drafted, and we should put that into the ordinance when it comes back to you for first reading, basically expressly stating that the prohibition applies to blowers that introduce foreign matter into the public drainage system, which already included streets by definition.
Don't we have that ordinance, something like that in the ordinance now, the books?
It, it does, but it's not expressly called out, so in speaking with the maker of the motion, he wanted to strengthen it by, by saying that specifically, which is certainly something that you can do.
And I appreciate the maker of the motion. I appreciate everything's being done. However, in all my years of public service, there may be some, but I don't know if anyone has got a ticket for that.
And we should have tickets for that because we're spending millions of dollars on somebody not doing, they're tidying up their own property.
Okay, anyone else? Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, I was the maker, so I was the one that pushed for it. I think, just on the way here this morning, I had two leaf blowers. I saw them blowing things, even across the street. They were blowing things out of the street. And it's a hazard in lots of ways. Cars dodged them. It's a hazard because of flooding. Flooding's one of the biggest issues in South Tampa. I mean, we set aside the pollution issue, but on the debris, he brings up the good point about the fines. You and I talked a little bit about fines. What did you come down on with that?
What I have here, as you'll recall, this is, the enforcement is done through a civil citation, and what I brought before you is the schedule that you have. You have four different levels. The way the ordinance reads right now, if it is an individual, it is a class one violation, and that is seventy-five dollars for a first offense that escalates up to four hundred and fifty dollars for a repeat offense. The way the ordinance was drafted, after much discussion in the beginning, it was felt that individuals should be in one category and businesses should be in another category, and businesses are actually in the highest category that we have, which is four hundred and fifty for a first violation. So I did try to see what would be comparable with surrounding jurisdictions, and I really actually did not find a lot of comparable regulations in other jurisdictions. Most of them limited the prohibition to dumping pollutants into the storm drain. We have a much more expansive prohibition, so I don't really have some comparables for you. But if you wanted to strengthen the penalty, then you could go up to class two, three, or four for an individual, which is certainly, you know, within the realm of what City Council could consider. But a class-two violation starts at a hundred and fifty and escalates, and a class-three violation starts at three hundred and escalates.
Councilman Gooch.
My question is, who's gonna enforce that? Police, code enforcement, who's writing those...
Well, last time you had a presentation from Salvagario explaining that code enforcement is the one that enforces this, and he talked to you, you know, about some of the issues that they did have with bringing these cases, because they have to be able to actually see it.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
It's, I understand, court enforcement, court enforcement can't do everything. It's not that they don't want to, it's that the way we run in the past, and I'm sure it's gonna change. I'm not opposed to having it the way it is in class one, the first one, because we're not here to slap somebody. We just wanna retrain what's happening in the past and changing from a hundred and fifty to seventy-five dollars is not gonna make a big difference. So I'm here to help somebody, help themselves, and help the city, not to collect money. However, that being said, it's gotta be more than just court enforcement. Court enforcement can't be out every time to somebody. There's a lot more people on the street than court enforcement, and everyone should be able to take a snapshot. I mean, it happens every single day. If anybody that's listening, anybody that's seeing us, if they drive through home from work, I guarantee they're gonna find somebody with a leaf blower, especially early in the morning or late in the afternoon. And that's how it is. And at the end of the day, it's costing maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars at the Howard Current Plant to clean out everything we're putting in, including tires. Everything goes down there. And it's just a terrible thing to do for the way that this earth is going.
Thank you. Councilman Dingfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions, Becca. One, as related, I'm a little confused as related to the distance. The way we've, the way the distance language is being proposed, can you clarify that?
I can attempt to do it. The direction was to match what we do with construction noise, so that is what I did.
Well, maybe that's equally confusing.
That's potential. But right now, there's a lot of double negatives, which is why... And without rewriting your entire noise code, it was a little hard to insert. But right now, you have your noise regulation, and right now, all lawn equipment is exempt from the noise regulation, so it can be as loud wherever and whenever at any time. What this change does is it still exempts it out if it's more than fifteen-hundred feet away from residential property. So you can be as loud with your lawn equipment at any time if you're more than fifteen-hundred feet away from residential property, which is consistent with how we treat noise from construction. If you're within fifteen-hundred feet of residential property, then you can only operate your lawn equipment, because most lawn equipment is gonna violate our noise regulations between these hours.
Oh, so the key is that the, at the top of that page, that these are the exemptions?
Correct.
And that's what flips it over?
That's what flips it over, correct.
Not abundantly clear to the casual reader, but I see where you're going. Seven AM, are we okay, are we okay with seven in the morning on a weekday? I know that we have a lot of seniors who might not be up at seven, or might not appreciate a lawn blower and a lawnmower.
I hate to correct you, not, not trying to correct you, but seniors get, wake up much earlier than you.
I just wanna sleep later. And I guess I'm a senior.
But you're not a senior, you're a...
I'm a senior.
You look like you're thirty years old, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Councilman? Um, we usually don't, but since you're the maker of the motion, and I know he's a valued member of your district and their city, and a Marine Corps veteran, so go for it. If...
Thank you.
And Jeff, we'll give you three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I need to be sworn?
No.
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 You're cool.
Okay. Hey, I'm cool. All right. Appreciate hearing that. My name is Jeffrey Niatupski. I am the president of the Gandy Civic Association, and I have some thoughts about what you're looking to do here. So I'm asking for the adoption and approval while take, of what you're looking to do, while taking in some of the suggestions that I have, which I think answers a lot of what we've been talking about. How do I do this? Okay, so on the first one, I'd like to see happen, limit the hours of operations of power tools for property maintenance to match the limits on construction noise. That's the way it was worded in the memorandum here, on why my suggestion is to allow folks to sleep in and allow landscaping companies to work longer in the day. So what I'd like to see happen for the hours currently is seven to six Monday through Friday, eight to six on Saturday, ten to six on Sunday. The change I'm requesting is across the board, seven to seven Monday through Friday, eight to seven on the weekends. I request that because I wanna give the workers, I don't want to kinda punish them for what we're looking to do here, so I'd like to give them an extra hour to work later in the evening. I have an exhibit to demonstrate what happens when leaf blowers are going off about five AM. A nice lovely family fell asleep. They woke up really loud to leaf blowing of the neighbors, so we want to try to put some language in there so they're not being woken up too early. A big problem for me is flooding, so another picture I took here is I'd like you to just say no to debris going in the drains. And what happens, you know, I make light of the situation, but what we're really looking here is to fix the flooding issues that we have down in South Tampa and all across the board in Tampa. When people blow the leaves and the debris and all this junk into our drains, it's a small accumulation that adds to the bigger problems. So I feel as if, if we kinda put a law in there and make the language a little more harsh, I think we can get some movement to, A, notify the public of what we're looking to do, and B, to your point, how do we enforce this? So I'd like to include some verbiage in the section twenty-one nine to include a fine of up to five hundred dollars for companies and citizens for violating the law. Also, I think the city of Tampa website should have a violation reporting mechanism. So to your point, Councilman Miranda, how do we enforce this? Well, if somebody sees it, they snap a picture, or however it may be, go to cityoftampa.com, locate the problem reporting section, and report this problem. I think small changes are needed to address the big problems that we have with flooding, limiting the amount of debris that gets in the sewer system. Eventually will help prevent a little bit of the blockage. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other discussion from council, or...
I would like to make a motion. I don't have the, I don't have the draft language in front of me. Do we do that now, or you wanna have discussion?
You can do that.
Um, do you, unless somebody else would like to make it. Ms. Kurt, do you have the language in front of you that we could recommend, and maybe taking his input? Are you all okay with the hours that he presented?
I think, an hour later, I didn't fully understand what he was saying, but...
I think he was saying, go, instead of seven to six, go...
Seven, seven.
Eight to seven.
Instead of seven to six, seven to seven.
Okay.
Is that the language? So we're just inserting, we're just inserting this language in?
Correct, and in the motion, I don't think, you're not required to read, to read all the strike through and underline. You can just direct us to make the changes that we presented with the amendment to the hours. That would be sufficient. And if you could state the hours.
So it's two different, two different motions, right?
No, same motion.
No, you can do one motion.
So in section, I'd like to move that section twenty-one point nine dash nine be amended to add the language, quote, "This prohibition expressly applies, but is not limited to using a blower or similar machine that generates a kernel of air to collect leaves and debris to introduce said foreign matter." And then in section fourteen dash one fifty-eight to add, quote, "If, small i, one thousand five hundred feet or more from the nearest property line of any zone residential property, or, i, i, less than one thousand five hundred feet from the nearest property line of any zoned residential property, and the property maintenance is done between the hours of seven AM to seven PM Monday through Friday, and eight AM to seven on Saturday, and ten AM to six, or to seven on Sunday."
Okay, and Councilman...
I don't know if there was a second.
Second.
Okay. Um, just a, perhaps a friendly minor modification on that. I appreciate Jeffrey's suggestion. I don't have a problem with that on the weekdays to go to seven, and of course, often it's still daylight, you know, half the year by seven. But on the weekends, it seems like people should have a little more peace and quiet as the evening rolls in to make their own noise. That was a joke. But anyway, but I was thinking if we rolled that back till six PM on Saturdays and Sundays, or leave, you know, per the staff suggestion, six PM on Saturdays and Sundays. I think that's...
I'm okay with that, if everybody else is.
You amend one with that? Councilman Miranda, it's a second?
Okay, okay.
And I tell you why I said that. I do care, but the problem is this, that the most noise you get in the house is not from the floor. It's from the music next door. When they have a party. I'm being very factual. I don't have a, I don't hear no floors. I sure as hell listen to the music.
But you like the dance, Charles.
But it's not my kind of music.
Councilman Citro?
And I'll go along with Councilman Dingfelder, however, the weekend is probably the only time that homeowners can actually get things done. Most times during the week, we don't have the time, and when we get off work at six o'clock or five-thirty, we're winding up watching sports on TV or doing something else. The weekend is the opportune time for homeowners to get things done. So I would like to see a state of seven, but Councilman Dingfelder, I can go with six o'clock.
Okay.
Well, you bring up a good point, I could, Mr. Chair. I was thinking more of the contractors and the, you know, the lawn maintenance crews. I wasn't really thinking about the homeowners, but I know it's, we can't really split one or the other. That'd be way too complicated. I don't know. I guess, I guess you'd convince me, Mr. Chair, that I wasn't thinking about the homeowners, so it's probably a good idea.
So withdrawn? Okay, Councilman Gooch.
Well, I was gonna say, I think, I think the weekend hours need to be a little longer because that's when people do a lot of work on the weekend, so I'm in favor of the weekend.
Uh, Mr. Shelby?
And Councilman Carlson, does your motion include requesting staff to bring that back and have it placed for first reading consideration at a future agenda?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
And when would that be? What, February?
When are we...
When is... You think February sixth is okay?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Yes, sir, and now we go back to forty-four. Councilman Gooch, your motion, and Chief Nick's here. And I know after Chief Nick's done, we'll wanna hear from Tampa Fire seven-five-four, and I know council members will want to speak, but go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Council. Nicholas Citro, Tampa Fire Rescue. I wanna say good morning to you and Happy New Year. My first chance to see you all together, so appreciate your continued service. As you well remember, back in September when we had budget meetings, one of the topics that was brought up was the fact of their response and delivery of service in East Tampa. At that time, we had a very good discussion, and we were set with the task to go back and evaluate. We looked at it as a programmatic step in evaluating the stance of eventually getting to a full-time unit for East Tampa. I appreciate the opportunity for us to be able to do that. What we did was, we looked at the last quarter, October, November, December. Basically, the unit was in service on a peak-time basis, and it yielded a total of a hundred and seventy-nine total incidents that it responded to. January sixth, I sent you an interim memo just as a high-level brief on some data and analysis of that, and I think quite honestly, it moved the needle in the right direction. I think it certainly helped those neighborhoods. I know Mr. Gooch was particularly wanting to know, and I tried to put the neighborhoods in there, so it's listed in there as Grant Park, Highland Pines, Jackson Heights. They were predominantly the ones that we went to. There were some other neighborhoods that it did go to, but predominance was in the areas that were, that we discussed. So the average response time just for those communities in those areas were right around seven minutes, which I think is a, an excellent time to achieve for a rescue unit response. As we move forward, we had a chance to look at staffing considerations. One of the things that did not come to fruition, remember there was some concern about, we have a couple other peak units in some other high-volume areas, and were we gonna have trouble staffing it for the short amount of time? We did not, and everything moved along quite well. But what this gave us an opportunity was to look at the logistics of the station, placing a unit there, evaluating the responses out of there, the data out of there, and the staffing. I have had a discussion with the mayor and the chief of staff, and certainly they are on board with an increased level of service. I've had a discussion with Mr. Perry from Budget, Mr. Rojero as well. And at this point, moving forward, my recommendation to you is, is that we absolutely could put this in service on a full-time basis. It would be my recommendation moving forward. So...
Well, thank you. Thank you.
How often does staff members get applauded? I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know, and I don't wanna be a trendsetter either, so I guess. But I thank you for your patience, your consideration, your dialogue. We did our due diligence, and we look forward to moving the needle for the city and East Tampa itself.
Okay, Councilman Gooch, then Councilman Miranda.
You know, it's always good when a plan comes together. We talked about it, we had discussions, and I'm glad that we had senior members here who understood where I was going. Being a person with experience out there in the field, I knew, and knew what was needed for that community, those communities. And I'm glad that our senior counsel, Ms. Miranda, was able to make sure we broke up this deal to get it in the right direction. Today, we got it done. And I think the people of East Tampa will be more happy to know that if this thing had been full-time, I'm looking at these numbers, if you multiply them by a full-time quarter by two, I mean, there are a lot of people that need service, so I'm glad that we are going in the right direction. I'm hoping in the future, we can look at, again, with budgetary constraints, but looking at, in the future, looking at ten that needs to be remodeled, or need to be torn down, to make sure we got a full level of service all throughout that area. But I'm just pleased today that you're... I'm just pleased today that you're telling me that we could, we, we were able to move forward with service for the people of that community, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Miranda, then Councilman Citro, then Councilman Dean Felder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Chief, for your words and your honor and your perception in doing what needed to be done, and we thank the local seven fifty-four, the leadership, especially of Mr. Greco and the rest of the members that are here, local fifty-four, along with Mr. Bennett and Mayor Castor, who worked on this diligently and on time, we said a hundred days, and I think it's been about a hundred days, so everything has come to order, and, you know, you don't have to be the best qualified team to succeed, just gotta be the hardest-playing members on the team to succeed. In sports, not the, the most qualified wins every time, the ones that work together are always winners, and the winners in this case are the citizens. Thank you all very much for what you've done, appreciate it.
Councilman Citro, then Councilman Dean Felder.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much, Chief, I'd like to thank you, I'd like to thank the mayor, Madam Mayor, thank you very much, I'd also like to say, thank Chief of Staff, Charlie Miranda, my friend Charlie Miranda, and all the council members, Councilman Goode's, for making this happen. One day, and I hope this day never comes, this move will be proved to be the right move that helps one person, and if we can help one person by this move, we've done a great job. Chief, thank you very much, and thank you to local seven fifty-four.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Dean Felder.
I'm good, y'all have said it all, thanks.
Okay, anybody else?
Um, I, just to say the same thing, thank you to, to Chief and to the administration for working on this, and the union, but also, Councilman Goode's, you, you work really hard for your constituents, thank you for pushing this and keeping it on the forefront, and congrats on it, another big one.
Yes, and a couple of things, obviously, to our friend Councilman Goode's, I, I just, you know, Councilman Goode's and I ran against one another in two thousand and sixteen, so we got to know one another, and, and I've just loved seeing him work hard and be so successful for his district, and it's, and that's really a pleasure. I, I want to bring, though, to the other part of that motion, which was also on thirteen, Station thirteen, do you have anything to say today about, now, what I can say to that is, I, we motioned separately, I think this was motioned from the hundred days out from the budget, and then I did a separate motion.
Yes, sir.
For two weeks.
Yes, sir.
To deal with this, not knowing that this was set for the hundred days. Do you have any data or information, 'cause, you know, from, from what I see about thirteen, and correct me if I'm wrong, that is one station that serves Bush Boulevard, Fowler, Forest Hills, that is an expansive area, you talk to the men and women there, you know better than I do, but whenever I go there and drop off my donuts, it's hemorrhaging, it really, really is, you got folks over there who are overworked in, in areas that really, really need a lot of help. I think that thirteen, and that's why I, I did the friendly amendment to include thirteen to this, is an area and, and a fire station that needs help right here, right now, and I'd like to see what you have on that, sir.
Yes, sir, and no worries, I, I think your recounting of the circumstances are true, and the issue is, is that we do need some further dialogue on that. I think my commitment as formerly the operations chief, and now the fire chief, I was the one that pushed heavily for a peak unit, I understand the demands of the men and women, and I understand the load on the citizens, when they require assistance, we certainly want to be there, so there is more dialogue to that. It will require some additional discussions with the mayor and the chief of staff, but I believe that we can get there as well, I'm working currently, have been having some very good and heavy dialogue with the chief of staff about deployment and options for that. We currently, just so you know, and just to reiterate, the peak plan still is in place for that, that northern area over there, and, and it does absolutely help, you can discernibly note when they're not there, okay? So, but we want to also move the needle in the right direction, as we did with this project, it will take some coordination, time, and discussion, but I'm, I'm certainly willing to do that, and we, we are working in the background on that, sir.
Okay, and, and I, I think a couple of things, I mean, taking a look at some help right here, right now, maybe looking at the part-time rescue being moved to thirteen, taking a look at additional funds in the budget when we start talking about budgets, I know that when I speak to the administration about my concerns for my district, thirteen is gonna be right on the top, because local government's first priority is public safety.
Yes, sir.
And again, if you look at the areas that thirteen covers, it's big.
Yes.
It's a lot of different communities, and those communities, and we, we all agree on that, obviously deserve the best, and, and to me, this really gets to a larger discussion, which is our citywide public safety needs, making sure that, 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 you know, we have arrangements here in the city of Tampa so that we don't have to have these discussions. I mean, when, when we're talking about public safety, and we're talking about fire, whether in East Tampa, North Tampa, anywhere else, we're talking about people's lives, we're talking about people's husbands, wives, kids, grandmothers, grandparents, et cetera, you know, and, and, and that's issue number one, so for us to have this piecemeal discussion, I think we have to come back to that on a later date, which is talk about a citywide approach to public safety, our number one local priority, obviously, but let me ask you though, 'cause we have the discussion set in a couple of weeks on thirteen, do you want to continue the discussion on thirteen to find more data and response times, et cetera, to that time, or do you need more time for that?
Quite honestly, I would like a little bit more time, we really have the data, I would like to be able to present to the chief of staff, a, a, a full array of strategies that could apply.
Yeah.
And within two weeks, I don't know that I'll, we're all busy, so at your, at your discretion, a date in the short term, but greater than the two weeks would be most appreciated by me.
What are you looking at, a month, maybe?
That would be fine.
Okay, and I'll make that motion at the end, I can make that motion at the end. Councilman Miranda, then I think Councilman.
And more importantly, some future councils, some here, some members that'll be here, and some future councils, this area is scheduled to be populated by twenty percent more individuals, at least, forty percent on the high side, within twenty-five years. The problem is, that in twenty twenty-seven, this council, this city council will have one more bite and an apple, then there's no more apples on the CIP money, so when that happens, some administrator, mainly this one, is gonna have to start planning not only for the term of office for eight years, but for the future, because if you don't do that, you can forget about thirteen, twelve, eleven, six, one, four, or five, it's gonna be all shortfalls everywhere. So somebody's gotta start planning, where's the income gonna come by, and how are you gonna come up with a plan to fund, and the fire engines aren't what they used to be in cost.
No.
A fire engine runs about a million dollars complete, what is a fire, uh?
An engine runs in a neighborhood of seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, a truck company, about one point two million.
Right, and, and, and a, a response for ambulance service and, and, you know, people that need the, I'll tell you what, the greatest thing you hear out in the public when you ask somebody is, when you call for help, is when the firefighters come in, men and women, and they feel relieved, they're fifty percent better, whatever they had, they're fifty percent better just by seeing the uniform.
Yes, sir.
So it is not only here, nationwide, that way, so we better start planning for something that hasn't arrived, but it's gonna arrive, the sunshine, people come here for two reasons, I've said it before, you only have two seasons there, summer and Christmas, and you don't matter who the politicians are, they come and go, but summer and Christmas always stay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Goode's.
Well, Chief, again, thank you, and again, to our local seven fifty-four, thank as well for being a process. Can you tell me, will this unit start running full-time when? Is that, is a new car gonna be there, is the same car, the older car that's there? Tell me the process.
Well, a little, a little surprise, we, we looked at the logistics of it, it will have a new unit, okay, so the community gets a, a new unit, we're in the final stages of prepping that unit right now, and as far as the start time, I haven't had a chance to disclose this to the, to the union, but really, I don't see, there's a couple things I want to tie up, but I don't see why we couldn't start it next week, quite honestly, it's, it, we're, we're right there.
Okay, as I was saying, I know Councilor Bear, the, the peak unit, and that might be a, another area to win now, until we could get it right, take that portion, ship that over, over to thirteen, to, to, I look at, I look at, anyone in this council ever had to do CPR? Well, Joe, what I can tell you, and I know Mr. Greco and Chief understands, 'cause I, I've, I've had to do CPR several times, I had to do it on the roof, and see, when, when, when you have family members around, and you're on that roof, and that person's regurgitating in your face, and you can't stop because they're regurgitating, you, you gotta keep working, gotta keep working, am I right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Gotta keep working, and, 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 and thirty seconds could mean, in your mind, it feels like an hour. When they getting there? When are they getting there? I've been in those positions several times, and it ain't a fun position to be in, that's why I was so passionate about a rescue car, and Mr. Miranda's right, when people see those uniforms, they feel relieved, someone's here to help, and that's why these things are so important, and that's why me and Mr. Bear get along so good, because we have the same type of passion and feelings about people, so I'm glad you're working on that, Chief, we applaud you for the efforts, the deal was broken, we kept our words on, on both ends, and I'm just hoping that we can continue this relationship, so we can get thirteen moving as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, anyone else? And what I, it's February sixth, good for you?
Say that again, sir.
February sixth, a month from today?
Uh, sure, we'll make it work, thank you.
Okay, just making sure before I make the motion, and we'll want to hear from Mr. Greco, if, if you have anything to say, but, but again, you know, what I'll be looking at at that day is taking a look at the budget this year, what accommodations and robust investments we can make in, in thirteen for that community, and again, taking a look at that part-time rescue being moved to thirteen, because again, from, from what I hear and what I see, there's a significant need for help there as soon as possible, I would suggest. Anything else, Chief?
No.
And, and before, Councilman Dean Felder, did you?
Not, not as related, Chief, but I just wanted to throw something in.
You want to throw it?
Yeah, so I just, I, I noticed the ATU's president, Steve Simon, was, had joined us today, and I don't know if we specifically called out, 'cause it was on consent, I believe it was on consent, the, the ATU agreement, and I just wanted to give a shout-out, both to the administration and to the ATU officers, and specifically the president, congratulations, that it appears that that went, the negotiations went fairly amicably, and, and we appreciate that, and all the hard work that ATU folks do over the years, thank you, sorry, Chief, didn't mean to step on you, but I just wanted to give that shout-out.
Thank you, well said, Councilman Goode, or, or, man, Scott, you want to say something?
Just to piggyback on, on what he said, you know, it's been less than a year, and I see how well this administration has been in communication with the unions, with, with everyone here, with the concerns of council, with you guys, everyone, we're really working together and getting things done, it's not political infighting, it's not back and forth, I mean, this is a momentous occasion, I appreciate Councilmember Goode's and all the other councils, everybody involved in this, but when we work together, we see how much we get done, without wasting time, without putting it off to the next budget year, we're finding solutions, so everyone involved, I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and anything else, Chief?
No.
And, and before we have Mr. Greco come up here, you know, something we may want to consider is, we did recently a, a study of a master plan for parks and recreation, is maybe taking a look at a, a master plan study in our first responder, public safety needs. Again, the, the thing, I love my parks, but I love public safety way before parks, obviously, so I think that's certainly something that we could take a look at, but we appreciate your time, and at the end, I'll motion for February sixth, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and Mr. Greco, if you wanted to speak, sir.
Yes, just very quickly, Joe Greco, president of local seven fifty-four Tampa Fire Fighters, want first, I want to thank the council, and of course, staff, mayor's office, Chief of Sisro, and all involved, especially Councilman Goode's for, for stepping up and making sure that this happened, we, we really appreciate it, the street appreciates it, the citizens of East Tampa, and across the city, I'm sure, understand the importance of public safety, and your commitment to pub, public safety is, is, I really appreciate it, and so do the people on the street, look forward to see what happens on February sixth, I believe you said.
Yes, sir.
With the rescue unit possibly up in, up in the Bus Gardens area. Thank you again for your time, and also for Chief of Sisro, hey, thanks, Chief, and mayor's office, Chief Bennett's been, been exceptionally available to talk about these issues in the, in the last few months, but I appreciate y'all, y'all's time, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and obviously, Chief, before that, we'll be looking to have a meeting on it, to take a look at the findings before, or, or, or office, and yourself, if, maybe Mr. Greco or others, so just FYI.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate it, thank you so much, sir, thank you. Okay, next we move to item forty-six.
Good morning, Council, Tom Snelling, Planning and Development. Councilman Carlson made a motion for staff to return and to give advice adopting certain policies regarding parking on construction sites, and just by way of background, I did provide you the, the report, but by way of background, the city addresses parking on, in various ways, unfortunately, it's not specifically about the construction parking, as you know, chapter fifteen forty-three talks about, you know, stopping and standing and picking people up in front of their house, there's a certain amount of time limit on that, and then the other part, that you can't park within ten feet of a driveway, that's obviously for line-of-sight issues and safety, because, you know, if you're trying to get out, you're jarring around, so that was for, really for safety for, for citywide, and then the same for the other one, when they were talking about not parking directly behind a driveway, or within twenty-five feet of that, again, it hampered, it impedes the vehicle trying to get in and out of driveways, and again, it's a safety issue. And then at fifteen, chapter fifteen forty-four, always talks about having at least a ten-foot wide path of egress moving up and down the street, so it, it stays open and people can maneuver, and sometimes when that happens in a construction site, that becomes problematic. Chapter twenty-seven really speaks to parking on, for subdivision model units, like in a larger subdivision, you know, read, New Tampa there, when they're up there, they have a model units up there, and they have a certain limit of parking, again, not the employees or the construction workers working on the job, it also talks about construction trailers and sales trailers, same thing, you get a site, you put your trailer on some site nearby, it's kind of like a staging area, but those only have, for employee parkings that are actually in the trailer themselves, or visitors who are coming up to the model sales center, and you have like two or three parking spaces for the comings and goings of that. As I pointed out in the report, in two thousand and six, this has had, had kind of come to a head, and they really drilled down in what they were calling a stage, a construction staging area, and part of that discussion included finding employee, specific employee parking for the anticipated number of employees that were going to work for a certain shift. Across the street, there, upwards of, over a hundred and fifty employees can be on that job, working at one time, same thing with what's going on up in Tampa Heights and some of the larger developments, so there's a lot of employees parking, the way that they handle it here, I'm imagining they either shuttle some of the folks in, or people are taking a bus, or they're parking off-site and, and kind of coming in, but it doesn't, again, we, we don't have anything in our code that says you have to have a parking plant, if you will. But the other thing about that, that I did want to point out, that it excluded parking within residential districts, and I think that's part and parcel part of the issue there, sometimes the big construction jobs do proactively try to figure out how to park their employees, 'cause they recognize the need for that, the smaller ones and twos in filled development in neighborhoods, for, for example, that's more problematic, if you go way, way in south parts Tampa, some of those roads are eighteen feet wide, and you get a couple of F-150s or something like that out there, that becomes problematic if you get that on a job site, matter of fact, I, I get complaints about that, I'm not gonna say on a regular basis, but it happens, so, so it excluded the thing for residential, residential parking, and for very small commercial projects, less than, you know, point five FAR, which is a small commercial project. So, getting to the advice part, if council wanted to pursue this, and take a look at that, I, I am recommending something a little, very comprehensive, 'cause what I don't want to do is go ahead and solve this problem here in an isolated box, and then come back a year from now, or six months from now, or pick your time, and we're saying, gee, you know, we really didn't look at this part, and we didn't look at construction, or we didn't look at residential, or we didn't look at ones and twos, I'm almost done. So, and, and I think it should be, no, I know, so it, it, it probably makes a good deal of sense to have a placeholder in chapter twenty-seven zoning, 'cause as I said, well, what St. Peter's Berg did, one of the women that I hired to work for Tampa has gone on to bigger and greater things over in St. Pete, and she's over there, the director, very similar to my role, she, her and Kate hooked up, and she sent over what St. Petersburg did, and I'll just read it, 'cause it's very short and very simple, which is, I like that, it says, "A construction plan shall be required to be submitted to the planning director for review," or they're designating, of course, "for approval prior to the initiation of a construction activity requiring site plan review," and then it talks about what it needs to, to address. The part that's attractive to this- The part that's attractive to this, it says requiring site plan review. Virtually any project requires site plan review. If it's a new house, you got to look at the landscaping, the trees, the stormwater, the flooding, the driveways, site plan review. Uh, projects like this that are coming here, again, there's site plan review because it's relationship to the, to the public realm, the construction site, off-site impact. So you're doing site plan review. What doesn't get a site plan review are, they're, they're called BRTs, Building Trades. If you're getting your, your air conditioning changed out, that, there, there's no review because it's a single kind of trades permit. Water heater, a new roof, things like that. But in those cases, that is not what is generating, you know, four or five construction trucks, you know, um, you know, doing a beach landing in front of the, of the job site. It's usually one truck, a couple of guys or women doing their job and they're gone in that day. So it's a very innocuous, very small kind of impact. So that's kind of what we're thinking. And, and the reason that would work in twenty-seven is because my plans reviewers, they do a complete site plan review on any building plan that is turned in. So they would catch it and that would be one more thing they would have to look at for cer, for, for certain. But, uh, it would be a relatively easy, it's not a really complicated code like, you know, like the electrical plumbing or mechanical code. And I will take any questions if anyone has any.
Yeah. Um, just, uh, my thoughts on this, and I've heard lots of feedback from lots of different people, from commercial peop, uh, uh, and residential, um, uh, landowners. And, um, I, I think that, as I've heard from other cities, what they have is just a requirement to present a parking plan. Ideally, there would be some notice if the, uh, if the parking spaces they intend to use are public spaces, like the open space on a street or, um, you know, two-hour non-metered spaces. If they're metered spaces, presumably they'd be paying the meter and following whatever the rules are. Um, the mo, the biggest example of this that I saw was, um, and I, I, I'm not involved with any of, any of these entities in particular, uh, but I, I frequent the restaurants. Says, "Across the street from Oxford Exchange and, and Mison Place, um, the, there used to be surface lots there. So that was owned by the people who built the building there and understandably that went away." Uh, but then they got permit to close Magnolia and Cedar. That was like forty-six spaces. And so, um, the surrounding businesses said they weren't notified of that in advance. Um, and, and presumably the cars would have been staged there. But then the construction cars all used the two-hour spots in front. And the, uh, the argument or allegation was that the two-hour limit wasn't being forced. But it, it's hard for the businesses to operate there be, it, it, or during that time. Uh, at one time though, I think there were three construction projects going, Falk Theater was under construction. And, and so there was no place for, for people to park. And the businesses made decisions relying on the public spaces being available. And so the point is not, not to prohibit, um, construction people from, from parking anywhere, but just to have a, um, a notice so that the surrounding, the, the surrounding neighbors, businesses or, or, um, residents would be notified. And they could provide some input into that. And if it, if they're all going to be off-site on the property controlled by whoever's building it, fine, um, it, it doesn't impact anybody. But where it's going to impact the public or nearby businesses, then they should, they should be able to provide some input to it. If, I mean, I don't know what my colleagues will say, but if you have that in some kind of, um, uh, proposed ordinance, I, I would, I would make the motion to come back and present that.
Anybody else, uh, Councilman? Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Snelling, you said you had some recommendations you thought. Did you elaborate on those recommendations?
Well, I, I just feel that, I, I just want to take a comprehensive look at it. So, I mean, the public notice part, um, and say, I hadn't thought about the public's notice with the Councilman, to be honest with you. But that, that has, that makes some sense because then the businesses do have an opportunity to react to it, virtually showing up one day and nothing. So mostly I just wanted to report on what we had. And like I said, my recommendation is to not just, you know, do a single line, this is what we're going to do, without, you know, drilling in to see what the effect is, pretty much citywide. And not just in the heavily redeveloped areas, Tampa Heights, Channel District, downtown, west shore, uh, midtown. But also within the, in, actual individual districts itself. Seminole Heights, South Seminole Heights, uh, if you're familiar with that, I'm, I'm sure Councilman Alan Scalco is, they're building houses all over the place, constantly. And then I built my house a year ago and there's already four new houses going in at the end of my street. So it, it's, it's a more, um, it's a broader issue than just a single issue. And that's, that was really my recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, uh, Councilman?
Yeah, and, and Tom, we had that barrage in, in Palmasilla, uh, you know, ten years ago.
Yeah.
My street, you know, one, one single family house would finish and then the next one would start. And we constantly had construction trucks parked up and down the street, sometimes legally, sometimes illegally. Um, you know, I, I don't want to come down hard on the single-family construction because, um, you know, typically on an infill basis, it's, it's, it's onesies, you know? And I, I don't, I don't, I think that might be a bit restrictive. But if we don't have anything in the code that speaks to, uh, parking as related to larger projects, and when I say single-family construction, I think what we might want to do, Tom, is, is limit it, limit this by perhaps square footage. You've got an FAR there, but if you have an acre, you know, with a point, you know, a point-five FAR, you could still have a very large project. Um, so I'm thinking if we li, if we addressed it by square footage, so even if it's single-family, if you're building a ten thousand square foot, single-family home, that's going to take two years. Um, that some of them do.
Oh, yeah.
Um, then maybe that's, you know, an issue that might want to more fall in line with the commercial, the commercial, uh, uh, thing. So when you look at this, um, you know, think, think about that. Um, like I say, I, I don't have any desire to come down hard on, on this, the, the parking as related to the single-family. I will note that some of the larger projects down on the Bay Shore, they, I think you mentioned this, they, it does appear that they're shuttling their crews or their crews had parking like underneath the crosstown. They must have some arrangement with the, um, you know, with the crosstown folks to be able to park under there. And I think that's really good and healthy, that we still get complaints, uh, from some of those streets, you know, adjacent to the New Colonnade building, whatever they're going to call it and that sort of thing. But, um, but at least most of their workers are being shuttled in or...
Well, and, and that will be one of the things that I would want to look into is like that, to actually talk to some of these construction companies, these developers, say, how are you dealing with your construction parking now? And they may say, well, this is what we do. Well, that's a good idea, you know? So I, I will certainly want to reach out to them at a minimum.
It's great if they're doing it voluntarily. I think that, um, we probably should have something in the code that, uh, perhaps, you know, mandates it so it's a little tighter.
Anyone? Yes, sir.
I, I don't know how you all want to proceed, but I, I would just ask that you, based on this input, that you come back with?
Draft.
A draft language for...
And let's, let's make the motion.
If, if we're gonna, if we're gonna move forward, this will fall into our January cycle. Uh, because it will go to twenty-seven, twenty-seven, you can change in January or July. So this will probably fall into the January cycle.
So it'll be combined with the...
It'll, it'll go with all the other code changes that are going forward.
So we don't need to separately schedule it? You'll put it in the...
Yes, it'll go into that schedule and it'll, it'll follow, um, the, the protocol that that normally does, workshops and things like that.
Okay, so I won't make a motion?
No. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Okay, next is item number forty-eight, or seven, excuse me, forty-seven.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, I am here on this item, which was a request to present a proposal for ordinance language regarding limiting overnight parking of boats and non-motor vehicles on residential streets. As you recall from the last time we talked about this, the city currently prohibits non, we call them non-motives, but we're changing it to non-motorized because it sounds, um, what's clearer. Um, it, they are currently, non-motorized vehicles are prohibited from parking in a parking meter zone. And City Council's direction was to prohibit them on residential streets. So I previously sent you language. We're remending the definition of non-motive, changing it to non-motorized because it's clearer, more easy to understand, and expressly saying what that is. Because there was some debate before about whether trailers and boats fit within this definition. So we're clearly calling out that they in fact do. Um, and then I expanded the prohibition from being in a parking meter zone to being upon any street in a traffic lane, in the alley, or any city-owned or operated property, other than for loading and unloading, um, on city streets designated as local roads. Um, I did local roads. We don't have a definition of residential streets per se. There are a couple of different ways we could approach that. It could be, um, on any street that's adjacent to residentially zoned property. Um, or I chose, my suggestion to you was local roads, which are the roads that generally traverse in your residential areas, um, mostly for enforcement purposes. Because we have to prove every step of, um, every element of a violation of this, including having to then do that extra step of going to residentially zoned property. I did, um, want City Council to consider, um, whether or not they really wanted it to just limit this prohibition from residential roads. Because if you limit it in one place, there's an assumption that you really want it other places. And I'm not really sure the, the intent of this was that we did want boats parked on our collector and arterial roads. Um, but I was trying to be responsive to City Council, so this is a language that I brought back. But certainly if you wanted to expand it to a complete prohibition, so there's no implication that we actually do allow it on these other roads, that's an easy change to make.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilman Dean Felder?
Yeah, Rebecca, thank you for doing this. Um, I agree, I, I think, and when I read it, I was wondering why res, just residential, because we don't want to chase them out onto the busier roads, which will cause other problems. So I would agree that maybe all public right away, or however you want to word that. Um, I had another question. Uh, we speak to non-motorized vehicles, including travel trailers, of which I appreciate, uh, the concept. But I'm thinking about, how about RVs that are self-motorized? Like, well, typically we call them Winnebago's and that sort of thing. So, um, I think if we're, if we're addressing this and we're serious about it, um, we probably want to include, you know, camp, campers that, that have a motor attached, you know, uh, that haven't injured. Um, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm up for discussion on that with Council, but I just wanted to point that out as it appeared that might fall through the cracks.
Um, that wasn't part of...
Let me throw one more thing and then go ahead. Um, also, um, I didn't see reference, we talked about travel trailers, I didn't see reference, and boat trailers, but I didn't see reference like construction trailers. Um, because I have seen those, uh, you know, if somebody's sort of in the construction business and they might leave their twenty-foot construction trailer out on the street because they don't have room for it on their property. So if this is an issue and this is something we're addressing, we might want to think about, uh, other, you know, types of trailers as well.
Um, Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, I'll address your, the second portion of it first because, um, I believe that those would already be included because the list was not limited to these, but expressly calling them out. Um, but the definition in and of itself would, would generally cover anything that is made to move people or things without a motor.
Right, but I'm, I'm talking about the other types of campers, motorized campers.
Right. Well, I'm going back to the second part of your question too, about the construction trailer. So I think it's already included.
Yeah.
It's not a problem to expressly call that kind of thing out as well. We don't really have a definition of it.
Okay.
But, um, certainly we can do that. It wasn't meant to be an exhaustive list. As to the first part of your question with the motorized RVs, the motion didn't expressly include that, but I did think about it because I know that that sometimes can be an issue too. So I wanted to call to your attention what is already in your code, um, that may address it or we may look to. Because it's not going to fit cleanly into a section on non-motorized vehicles. It's going to have to be a different change. So currently you have in your code that ten feet of roadway has to remain open for vehicular tra, traffic. So if there was in fact an RV that's taken up more than its fair share of the road and there's not a traveling open, they're already in violation of your code.
Yeah.
Um, maybe we need to make sure everybody's aware of that section. And there's another section too, um, which I wasn't aware of. But we do currently prohibit parking trucks over eighty inches.
Bring it down, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that wasn't helpful at all. Okay. Um, we already do prohibit parking trucks over eighty inches, um, or more in overall width on any of the streets of the city designated by chapter twenty-seven of this code as a residential district. So we're going back to the residentially zoned language, but this is language that's been in there since prior to nineteen eighty-nine. Um, and probably prior to that, because everything was recodified in nineteen eighty-nine. Um, if you would like to, um, we can verify, there's no definition of trucks. Um, so we could try to clarify what exactly this covers. And it covers over eighty, but I, I'm not going to say that I'm an expert in RVs, but I did do some Google research and they do appear to be wider than eighty inches. Um, actually an F-150 gets pretty close to that, some of the larger ones.
But not, but not mine.
But not yours.
Not mine either.
Well, I, I, I just, I wanted to point that up. I, I think if we're, if we're addressing campers, um, and we're serious about it, then I think we should include, uh, in some fashion, somewhere in the code, and I'll leave that up to you, um, you know, the, the motorized version as well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Miranda?
I, I was just going to bring up semi-trailers and I think that's what this fifteen forty-seven addresses. And, and at times, you see them all the time, if you drive, especially on weekends, uh, cities that have visited in the past are big, big areas in Miami that, there's a big area for parking. In fact, it's all paved and there's a guard at the gate and you drop your tractor and trailer and you go home. But in this case in the city Tampa, I don't, there's no land for that. And, uh, on any weekend, you can travel certain parts of the city. Not only do you see the tractor and trailer, but you see sometimes they drop off the trailer and they take the tractor in to the house. And especially in the area that I won't mention now, but you can find five or six on any weekend in the city. And that's not right. Somebody's going to get hurt, somebody's going to get, a kid plays, they don't see it. You can't see them under a trailer or a tractor and somebody's going to get killed. And it's a nuisance. It's a disease because, it's a disease because it brings down the neighborhood and value. You have one, the next week you have two, and if you don't do anything in two years, you have fifty of them. And there's where the disease spreads. It spreads like a disease, not a disease itself. So I'm not harping, I'm just saying that we should be much more vigilant and what we have on the books, that's on the books. And, uh, we stop, I know code enforcement did some, and it went further than that. The individual then moved the tractor and trailer to the lawn in which he was staying in the house, in front of the house. And I've got pictures if you want to see it. That's all I'm going to say. And it's about you, it's about all of us. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goode's?
Uh, that's kind of where I was going with that, because I'm seeing a lot of the, um, vehicles that attach to huge trailers that transport vehicles. And they're parking right in the yards as well. And I was, I was thinking about that as well. It's starting to become a, a big nuisance when you drive down communities and I'm like, why is this huge, long bed sitting in the, front of the yard? You know, so I just, you need to take a look at that as well, as you're looking at that, because a, a lot of that's happening. I don't think, that, that should be parked in a certain place, but not in a, from a front yard. It just takes away from the whole scenery of the community and so forth.
Um, Councilman Goode?
Violation already.
That is, yes, that's what I was going to say. There are already prohibitions in your, in your zoning code about parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas. So that's probably already something that should be forwarded to code enforcement for them to follow up on because they do bring cases on that. Um, they might not see all the ones that you're seeing, but, um, cases, I do see cases being made on that and that is already a violation. It shouldn't be happening.
Just thinking ahead of the individuals who might be taking this, and, and most of these trucks have a license from out of state. It becomes a problem. However, when a landowner permits that individual, then the landowner, the landowner has this equal responsibility, we're to find him to also, because that's not right. They're violating the facts because, you know, Arkansas or Missouri or wherever they come from, and they just park them there and they leave them there. And they'll leave them there from Friday to Monday morning.
Code enforcement actually, in that situation of the commercial vehicles on residential property, would go after the property owner, um, probably first, um, in that situation. Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is, um, the penalties. So this could be enforced by your parking, under your current code, parking spell, specialist or law enforcement. And the non-motive vehicles are obviously a parking citation, they're also subject to impoundment. But in looking at this and talking to our experts enforcement, and I think I brought this up, well, I did bring this up to you last time, but I just want to remind you, um, dealing with boats is not necessarily easy. Finding people to tow them is not easy, towing them is not easy and it's not inexpensive. So I don't want anyone to think that it's necessarily an easy answer, um, out there. There are some logistics and costs involved in that, um, just so you're aware. But the first thing is to get it on the books, get the ordinance on the books. And, and it is, it is a possibility to enforce it through that path.
Does the, does the proposal include the possibility of booting instead of towing? Because I think-
It's a mobilization and impoundment, yes.
Yeah, because booting might be a, a pretty good solution as well, and not, and not as impositional on our abilities.
Correct. I was told that it also may be challenging to, to do some of that, but I think with the trailers, it makes more sense that it would be a viable option.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any councilman?
Yeah, just that, this is one of the biggest areas of complaint that I get, you know, compared to some other issues we address in the city, like rats and community centers, that it doesn't sound as important. But neighbors are worried, as you heard earlier in public comment, people are worried about public safety and, and public safety vehicles being able to go down streets. People feel like it's imposition. We have the, I think the Realtors supporting us, Neighborhood Association supporting us. So what, what do we do as next steps? How do we?
The next step would be to direct the legal department to come back with an ordinance for you to consider on first reading, and I would just like some clarification, whether or not you would like to have this apply to all public roads, and whether or not you would like an additional modification to address motorized trailers. Those are two, I think, outstanding questions.
Can we do it now, or we have to wait?
Um, if you want to, since Ms. Fertz here.
Do you have the, can I just make a motion to ask you?
Yes.
So I'll move to ask you, or legal to come back to advise us on, on modifying regulations regarding un-motive vehicles, but also the, the larger, I don't know the language, the larger motorized vehicles on public streets.
Okay. We have a motion by, yes, sir?
Yeah, just one other thing that I made a note on. I don't, I don't want us to be overly harsh on this, and it speaks to, like, it doesn't speak to warnings. It speaks to, you know, just like officer could come up, see the problem in sight right away. And I'm just, maybe you can think about it a little bit as you go through this, any possibility for, for a warning. You know, because, listen, it very well could be, you know, the, the actual, you know, I have a house, and I park my boat in front, and I'm not aware of the ordinance. Next thing I know, I got a $100 ticket to deal with, and, you know, that sort of thing. So just if, I'm, I'm not asked for an answer now, but just think about warnings, if that's a friendly amendment.
Yeah, I would, I would be good with that.
Good for that? Okay.
Yeah, and, and just so, just so folks know at home as well, folks with boats, I'm not trying to prevent anybody from doing anything. The problem is that there's lots of, lots of people who feel that, that the way folks have parked these have been an imposition on them, and, and so, you know, if we can, if we can solve the problem for everybody, that would be great. So I don't, yeah, I'll leave it up to you to come back with a recommendation.
I just wanted some clarification. Would you like this language to come back at first reading, or would you like to see it again before it comes back for first reading?
First reading.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you have a when?
Yeah, we need to set a date, I'm sorry.
February 6th.
February 6th it is.
Thank you.
Okay. I know, that's going to be a great day. Next, we, in 48 is, that's, is that being continued? Okay. Okay. Then we move, okay. We need a motion. We have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Citro, second by Councilman Goode, all in favor? Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Barrett, I appreciate the fact you're, you're going to take this to the development community in regard to impact fees.
Yes.
I don't know if there's an opportunity to, to perhaps take this to Thanh and some of the other sort of general community folks as well, just so everybody has a chance for input. But anyway, I'll, I'll leave that in your trusty hands.
Brad Barrett, Public Works Minister, we can certainly take it to, to Thanh as well. Our plan is to have at least a couple of public meetings with the development community, get their feedback, and of course, we have to, if we're making any changes to the impact fees, we would have to provide 90-day notice minimum. We would like to give a little longer than that, so, but we could certainly, in that timeframe, take it to Thanh as well. Thank you.
We figure out if it's 90 after the ordinance is adopted, or is it 90?
It's 90 days before you make any changes to the impact fees, or I should say increases, or impose any new impact fees. So, so ideally, if I could walk through the timeline, timeline just real quickly, in the next couple of months, we can have the public meetings with the development community, get their feedback, you know, of course, take that back to the mayor and chief of staff. And then if the feedback is good and positive, that, that we're having development pay for, you know, or, or growth pay for its own way, if you will, then we could schedule a, changes to those impact fees, you know, soon after this presentation in June that provides that information. So it gives, if you will, it gives City Council two bites at the apple. You know, you, you receive the information, you see the, the feedback we got from the community, and then, you know, soon thereafter, in a couple of weeks or a month, you would be asked to make a determination on that.
Sounds good. Okay. We have a motion, I believe it was by Councilman Miranda, I think second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is going to be item 49. And that's, is that you, Mr. Shelby?
That's your motion, Mr. Chairman.
There you go. Well, yeah, and, and thank you. Mr. Shelby, thank you for taking the lead in drafting this. This was a, a resolution that we did. We approved the, the basics of the resolution in support of a bill supported by Fines and Fees Justice Center to eliminate driver's license suspension for non-payment of certain debts. That would exclude, of course, child support. If somebody isn't paying their child support, we will bring down the hammer of the almighty on them continually. And this would obviously not deal with that issue at all. But I, I think everyone has had a chance to review it, and I see Sarah here from Feeds and Fees Justice Center. If you wanted to speak for a minute, you may do so. You waited so patiently.
Yes. Hi, Council. Thank you again for-
And if you could state your name, sir.
Oh, Sarah Kotor. I'm the deputy director for the Fines and Fees Justice Center here in Florida. And thank you all for having me come present in December on this issue. I appreciate you listening to us. I gave you all a copy of our report, Drive Empty, that is, that Driving on Empty, that was a analysis of the data that we received from the DMV, and I appreciate you all taking the time today to consider the resolution.
Thank you so much, ma'am. We appreciate it. And, you know, one of the things I like about this legislation is it appears to be bipartisan, and, and that it really has a good shot at passing in Tallahassee, and that it's really going to improve people's lives once it hopefully passes and stop that vicious, ugly cycle that worsens the effects of poverty. So we thank you for your work, Sarah.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you. And both of the bills have been referred out to committee meetings up in Tallahassee, so we are getting movement, and we are excited about that.
That's great. And thank you for your hard work, because I know that this is a big passion for you. Now, like I said, it really, really improves people's lives. Thank you. Anyone else from council? Yes, sir. Do you need to make the motion? Did you need to say anything?
No.
If you want to make the motion.
I can.
There, okay.
No, no, no. No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Does he pass the gavel?
Yes, pass the gavel.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Vieira.
Second.
Second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next we have item number 15. Ms. Solomon, before you get up here, are you going to be with us dur, I mean, you can, I'm sorry, before you begin presenting, I should say, are you, I, I assume you're going to be with us during the duration of the meeting?
Yes.
If I may, I want to go ahead and have, I know we have a hearing, because we have someone from the public here waiting in for me. I want to take that up first.
29.
Yes, sir. 29 it is, and I think that's her last one, then before this one. Oh, I'm sorry. 29, Councilman, thank you, thank you. Who's here for 29? And then we'll take up the hearing.
Good morning. Council Gregory Hart, Equal Business Opportunity Manager, here to answer questions on 29.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, since I polled it. Council, looking at item 29 in, in review of our agenda, of course, you know, we always want to look and see how we're doing on the WMBE and the percentage, and I appreciate Council participating in that regularly. Now, this one, I believe, shows a point, a 0.42% WMBE participation in this $1.4 million contract for stormwater box culvert rehab. And so it's 0.42, which is less than one-half of a percent. You know, we've been, we've been working with staff, and we pat staff on the back when, when our numbers get up to 10% or 15%, or sometimes even 20% WMBE participation, and this one is half a percent. And it's not an insignificant amount of money, the $1.4 million. So that's why I pulled it for discussion. I have great concern about it. I've talked with staff about it over the last day or two, but Greg, carry on.
Yes, sir. Let me just give the Council a quick overview of this particular project. As you stated, the goal was set at 4.2%, and that's based on the scope of work, availability, subcontractable items, et cetera. The city received four bids. The low bidder was disqualified for deficient capacity and experience with large box culverts. This is not a small box culvert project. So that in, in and of itself gives you some, some insight. This particular scope has, has approximately $40,000 in subcontract economic opportunity for certified companies. Each bidder was provided with a source list of certified companies we, to solicit. We actually give them a list of certified capable firms that can respond to the opportunities in the contract, so that we can assist them with their matchmaking and outreach. So we give them a leg up. The average quotes received by each of these bidders was 1.5. All the bidders did use the quotes that they received from our certified companies, and the recommended bidder on this project used the certified company, who did submit a quote in response to their outreach and solicitation. So in summary, the opportunities were, were not that great. Each of the bidders did, in fact, utilize our list, and then probably additional outreach based on our records, and all of them only got one or two quotes, and they used the quotes they received. And the outcome was, as Councilman Dean Felder stated, was half a percent participation. The goal was 4%.
Why do you think that is? I'm just curious. Every time I look at these bids, and I always hear that no one's hungry, and I just can't find that no one's hungry to want to make any money, and I'm just looking at other places that have a certain standard, regardless, this is the standard. But we always say, well, no matter what it is, we're just going to go here and take the bottom. And I'm just trying to figure out, why is that? Why don't we have a certain standard, say, we are here, regardless, this is where we need to be? What, what I see all the time is the same old, same old, and I think we need to change how we're doing this process. To me, something's just wrong in the process of it. You're saying the, the bidder goes out, they can't get anybody here, there, and I'm just thinking, well, is it the language? Is there certain, certain, certain criteria that's, that's holding people back from not applying? Or I, I'm just trying to figure, what is it? Maybe you can help me with that.
Well, we do have standards. We have best practices in place, and the city of Tampa is recognized as, as a lead in, in the supply diversity arena. We subscribe to all of the best practices and judicial guidelines, where you have race-conscious and gender-conscious programs based on, on disparity analysis. In this particular case, I think it's reflective of the project itself. The scope of work is primarily large box culvert. The subcontractable opportunities, regardless of the subcontractor's ethnicity or, or size, are very limited. And it's just, on this particular project, the opportunities simply for anybody that's a subcontractor were not abundant. But we did get something. We set a target at 4%, knowing what's in this project, knowing who's available in our community. We said, it may be small, but go out there, meet the payment, and get something for the city of Tampa as far as inclusion, and that's what really happened.
But, but you just stood a point. In our community, are we going outside our community? I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, my thing is getting participation, but you're saying there's nobody in town to do it? Are we looking at other places? I mean, you know, I mean-
We, we look and, and, and direct bidders to look in the entire metro area. A lot of our certified firms are in some of our contiguous county jurisdictions. It's not just the city of Tampa. Our program is a, is a, is a metro program, because we realize that there are interdependencies, and a lot of the subs that do work for the city of Tampa don't reside in the city of Tampa. We certify firms of Pinellas, Pasco, Polk, and Manity, because that's, that's our market area. So to your, to your question, sir, yes. Hey, wherever you can get inclusion, please, we, we, we do push that.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dean Felder?
I don't know where the problem is, but I do know, I do see a problem. And, and I'm going to point to the scope of services on this particular project, and this is in about the second or third page in the documents. And it says, this isn't just about building these big giant culverts. We've got $325,000 for hydraulic cleaning of box culvert. Hydraulic cleaning, to me, sounds like take a hose and clean it out, or power, probably power, power wash, or power hose, or something like that, but not overly sophisticated. Doesn't require necessarily specialized, you know, training, et cetera. And then the next line speaks to $75,000, which is mechanical cleaning of box culvert. Sounds like shovels to me. But, but anyway, you know, I know I'm being a little silly about it, but, but it's serious. It's $400,000 out of this $1.4 million. I think it's about cleaning out these culverts before they start to work on them. And why is that sophisticated? Why, you know, why, why, why didn't the city see that and, and raise our goal higher than 4%? And why didn't the successful bidder come in at more than 0.42%, which is, of course, less than a half percent? A lot of questions, a lot of money. I'm not going to support moving forward with this bid. I know that staff and folks who work on these bids want to move it forward, move it forward, and I don't know why this is a rebid, but I can't support it. And I'm, you know, and I'm, actually, this comes out of one of my departments. So, you know, so I'm, I'm going to actually move to, to reject it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
When you break down the scope of work, because I don't, for some reason, it's not in my book. And when you break down the scope of work, and you, and you say cleaning, so you mean to me, there's no other subperson that can do cleaning, can do this type of work? Maybe these categories would be broken down in tiers, like I said before, to where maybe that portion is somebody else's deal versus one whole person saying, well, we just can't get this done. I, I just don't know. I, I think we're just missing the mark here. But he's right. You know, when you look at hosing down and cleaning a mechanical piece, I mean, I, I just can't imagine that you need some huge type of certificate degree to, to clean. I, I just can't believe it. To me, it goes back to where other places, where, you know, maybe it, it's going to become a time to where we may need to be looking at these RFPs before they go anywhere, to make sure that we see what's missing, and we, we implement. Because I just think it's all how it's been written, and I just believe the way it's been written, it is not coming across to, to the outside world, so people can bid and get these jobs. That's just me, because when I look at this, when you bring up my cleaning, you're right. I mean, I just don't, I don't get it. I just don't get it. I'm sorry, but I just don't get it.
Anyone else?
Can you explain, I don't know what that is. They say cleaning. I don't, I don't really know what it is.
Well, I, I'm not going to suggest I'm the expert at, at the engineering aspect. Well, I'm, I'm not going to suggest I'm the expert at, at the engineering aspect.
I'm not saying you are. No, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not saying you as an expert.
But fundamentally, I can tell you, because we do examine all of the, the scope and the particulars, because we get the engineering estimate, which breaks down every single task that's required in the project. We take those tasks, we work with our engineers and we categorize those tasks so that we can, as Mr. Goode's alluded, can tier those and break them down into subcontractable opportunities. But you've got to have the availability of firms when you break all that stuff down, which we did. And then we identify those broken out categories of work and where we have the availability. And that's how we, in summary, calculate the goal. But I cannot speak to why a contractor who might have the capacity and requisite license to do something decides, I want to work on something else, it's not worth my time to go piddle with a, I'm just example, a $3,000 cleaning out a culvert, even if they do have the equipment. My point here is, we go to great lengths to break down projects to make sure that we've identified the opportunities that are embedded in that project. And we literally go out to the community, give that contrast, say, we know this exists. Here are the companies that we think can do it, go talk to them. We require them to talk to them.
And the rebidding is for what reason?
I believe the rebidding was done because of some additional scopes of work, which was realized after receipt of the initial bids. But I will defer to the user department and contract administration for the specifics.
Councilman Carlson.
Just quickly, I think we've said this before, where the community is asking us to just, all right, reject any contract that doesn't have minimum minority participation. And I at least have asked them to give us time to work with the new administration and you to make that happen. I appreciate all the effort that you're putting in. I know the administration's serious about it. But there is this drumbeat behind us. So if you hear us asking about it, it's because the broader community wants us to take very serious action toward this. And, and we're trying to just keep pushing to make sure we don't end up in a situation where we have to just reject a bunch of contracts. So anyway, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. We're also concerned and very committed, believe me, you.
Councilman Goode's.
I, I keep hearing all the time, contract admin, contract admin. So is contract admin the one that's coming up with all these numbers? Because even with these infrastructure buildings, I always hear, contract admin came up with that number. So I'm just wondering, is, is that the main culprit to say, these are the people that tell what, what these projects cost?
Contract.
My thing is, where, where are they getting their matrix for these costs?
Contract administration is the procuring department, which in essence means they develop the engineering estimate. Or they have a consultant or a person who develops that project estimate, that scope, what's involved. Okay? That's where it's generated. We receive that, we sit down with them and we, we develop what we call a project task worksheet, as I mentioned, where we will, we will categorize all of those tasks, okay, into groups of work that might lend themselves to subcontracting. And then we look at who's certified in those categories of work. And there's a methodology and a calculation of that goal. So it begins with the work scope and the engineering budget, if you will, that comes out of our contract administration department, who represents all user departments that need to solicit bids for construction and construction-related services, if that helps. So they, they don't set, they don't set the EBO or the WNBE goal. We do, based on their information.
Based on their information?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, you know, I keep hearing about contract admin. So I think maybe it's time that, and I'm willing to make a motion at the end of, at the end of our meeting and get contract administration to do a workshop with us. I think that is key to understand how they are, they're calculating these figures when it comes to development and so forth. Because I, I don't know and I want to know to be in the know so I can go back and look at my facts and look at maybe these, you know, how, how it's working. Who's actually getting these contracts all the time? And that's my concern. I see the same people getting the same contracts with these high dollar prices and that's concerning to me. And I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion in the meeting in reference to contract admin to come do a workshop with us, sir.
Thank you. And Councilman Dingfelder, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I do want to say in, in defense of, of the administration and specifically Chief of Staff Bennett and also Mr. Hart, you know, we've been having a lot of conversations about this behind the scenes, which is fine. You know, to say, we know where we're at, how can we do it better? And, and I know it's not an over, I know it's not an overnight solution because it's sort of the, it's a, it's a big picture thing. It's, we need a lot more community involvement. We need to be more proactive. And, and the Chief of Staff and Mr. Harder are in total agreement that, as well as Ms. Post, who participated in one of these discussions. So I don't want to, want it to sound too negative. They know there's an issue, they know we can do better. They also know that we, you know, this council approved $2.8 billion over the next decade or two for the pipes program. And that with that $2.8 billion, we need to do a much, much better job of getting this money into the WMB community. So anyway, I, I just wanted to, to give that olive branch out to the administration to recognize that they, that they're thinking about it. But I agree with Mr. Goode's. I think that perhaps sometime by the summer, they need to come back in here with a tangible plan of how we're going to do it differently and better, perhaps via a workshop. However, in the short term, I can't in good conscience vote for this item 29. And my motion is to respectfully reject it and let them figure it out again.
And, and before we do that, I think that this is under committee and this is Councilman Meniscalco's committee.
Oh, I thought it was mine.
I, I believe it's Councilman Meniscalco's.
Okay, transportation.
Yes, so we, I'd have to go for, to Councilman Meniscalco on that. If you'd like to move it or deny it.
I would, I would vote to make a motion to move it forward. And if the votes are there, fine. If not, you know.
And, and before we do so, let me ask a question here. What are, I mean, because I, I think obviously we all agree with Councilman Dingfelder's issues with regards to diversity, pluralism, et cetera. I think Councilman Carlson makes a good point, which is that, you know, we're pushing on that issue and this Rome isn't going to be built in a day, so to speak, that it's, it's going to eventually be built. What are our options? In other words, if this, if this was, just to educate us, if this was to be rejected, what would happen? And is there any sort of middle ground where, you know, you can continue this for a month and, and seek, I don't know, some sort of narrowly tailored outreach just to, just to put that out there?
Let me respond in, in, in the order of your question. If we reject it, of course, we'll go back out, rebid. That's probably anywhere from a 45 to 60 day process before you see it again. This is a stormwater project. So of course, any of these infrastructure projects are important. If we go back out, we may get a goose egg, given the, the marketplace and how strained it is right now for labor and workforce. To answer your second question, if you move forward, we always do and will in this case, nudge the contractor, hey, has anything else popped up where somebody's available now that you can use that's certified to increase your participation? We always do that. So it's possible that we get additional participation. Those are the options.
And, and before I recognize Councilman Dingfelder, you know, that is something that troubles me and I'm glad to ask that question, which is a stormwater project of this amount potentially being delayed, that's certainly something that is worth thinking about. Councilman, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, Mr. Meniscalco, I thought util, all the utilities were mine, but I know they reorganized and I apologize in that regard. But in regard to, to my motion, and I'll, I'll temper my motion. If, if it's, if it's Mr. Hart's recommendation to perhaps give the bidder, this particular successful low bidder, an opportunity with your help to revisit their outreach over the next 30 days and see if they can do a better job than one-half of a percent. I'm open for that because we want, we want the least price. But, but at the same time, we, I think we're all in agreement, we want greater participation. Now, I, so I'll, I'll, I'll temper my motion a little bit. But I also want to point out, Mr. Hart, that we have them sign this document and it's, and basically it's sort of an attestation to the fact that they have contacted and solicited the following minority businesses. And then they attach this four-page list of 80 potential vendors. And it's, and it, and he signs it, whoever this person is, he signs it and he says, this is, you know, see attached list for solicited subcontractors. And then he attaches probably what is our list to the, to the document of 80 potential subcontractors, many of which, when you read what they are and who they are, I would think that they could be the type of companies that could hose out these culverts and, and dig them out when they're full. So with that said, maybe they need to resolicet and be a little more aggressive in their solicitation. And maybe they'll come back with 10% participation. Who knows? So I'm, I'm, I'll modify my motion, Mr. Chairman.
And, and if I, am I reading that as a friendly amendment to Councilman Meniscalco's or?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll respectfully request to the chairman of that particular department to defer this for 30 days or four, well, what's, I guess that same February.
Six.
Six. To come back and see if they can do a better job with MB.
How do you feel about that, sir?
That's fine with me. So I'll make the motion to then defer this for 30 days in reference to the amendment for comments made by Councilman Dingfelder.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Meniscalco, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move to our hearing. And may I have a motion for, and staff clerks, y'all okay with 30 more minutes?
Sure.
Okay. Everybody here okay?
Sonya, can you come up here, bud? Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt, legal department.
Oh, I, I didn't vote on, we had a motion, I think, by Councilman Miranda. And I'll give the second to Councilman Citro. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt, legal department. This is a petition for review hearing for denial of an administrative special use one permit. As you know, the administration has the ability to approve certain special use permits if they meet certain criteria. However, the administration does not have any ability to waive any of the criteria. So if any of the criteria are not met, they have to come before city council for a hearing. The issue before you on this one is, it's a request for a congregate living facility. One of the criteria was not met. The question before you is whether or not, if the waiver is granted to that criteria, it still meets the general standards. The general standards are provided to you in your staff report and I do have sample motions for you.
Yes, ma'am. If anybody here hasn't been sworn in and is going to be speaking, please stand if you're able to do so and raise your right hand and prepare to be sworn in.
Do you sound dissuaded or informed to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Go ahead, sir.
Eric Cotton, Planning and Development. This is a petition for review by Martha Medina for a property located at 716 North Dakota Street. The petitioner is seeking to establish an eight-bed congregate care facility at the property, which requires a thousand and separation per Florida statute. She was unable to meet that requirement. And as Ms. Kurt just indicated, as a result, administratively, we deny the request. And then she appeals to city council and seeks that waiver for the distance separation. There are two facilities within the required distance. You can see on this map, one is on North Flora, excuse me, West Flora Avenue. This one is 950 feet away. And there's another one a little bit closer at 712 New Orleans, North Orleans, excuse me, that's at 581 feet away. So that's the, that's the sole reason the applicant is before you today. Just to, although they're in your, when you showed the stat, the site plan, it's a single-family home. Appears to be a single-family home and from the outside, I'll show you some elevations in a moment or some photographs, providing the two required parking spaces for the single-family This is the house in question. This driveway, I believe, is proposed to be removed. So it's provided the one driveway. And she's in a single-family neighborhood. As you can see, the surrounding properties, this is to the property, these are the two properties next door, both single-family homes. And I believe I have a picture of the property across the street. And these are the properties across the street. If council, if council has any questions, I'm here to answer them. If you don't, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question with this to Ms. Kurt real quick. Rebecca, I apologize for, I was slightly distracted when we started this. No, it's not too far. In regard to this type of use, the congregate living facility, I know that there's been a lot of litigation as related to these types of facilities all over the state, probably nation. And I just wanted, I didn't know if you had given us any cautions that might be relevant to, to this discussion. Obviously, we have a duty to do and, and we'll carry out our duty, but we also don't want to step into potential litigation without, you know, without unnecessarily.
Thank you, councilman. At this point, you should just be reviewing the code criteria as far as anything additional. You just need to be cognizant of, it is not a relevant question, who, who is residing in here? There's not certain types of people that we like better than other types of people. You need to review it just strictly from the use, that, you know, that there will be additional beds in here and what the impact to the surrounding neighborhood could be and whether or not the applicant has met its burden to demonstrate that the waiver, which was explained to be the separation distance requirement, that the petition itself and the proposed use is still meets all your general standards and doesn't have an adverse effect on the neighborhood.
So relevant things might be traffic and parking and neighborhood things like that, but not who, who, who is being, who is living.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Applicant?
My name is Martha Medina and I would like to respectfully request that you approve my petition to waive distance separation for another congregate facility for eight residents. This specific location has been selected, hoping that you approve this, taking in consideration the distance between our sister facilities. We currently have two other additional facilities, according to time one and two, okay? Basis on the Florida statute of administrative code, an administrator can manage a maximum of three facilities within a 15-mile ratio of each other. So that's why we respectful, respectfully would like for you to take in consideration our petition. Additionally, this location is seven minutes away from the, from hospital and fire stations. Those are aspects that we take in consideration, always thinking to preserve our residents' life and safety. Excuse me. Our business has offered such a high level of care that we currently have a waiting list and we're in need to add an additional facility to our line of business. I would like to mention that, yes, indeed, there are two additional other facilities, but the distance that the code takes in consideration is linear, meaning that they're not taken in consideration turns. The North Dakota Building, it is actually, if you take in consideration the turns driving wise, it is 1,584 feet from the North Flora facility and about 1,000 feet, if you take in considerations, again, the turns, from the North Olium Building. None of the two facility owners have objection that we establish business at this location. I would like to add that I'm very aware of the importance to maintain the communities with a home-like environment and it is, that is our ultimate goal. We're not seeking to overcrowd the neighborhood. We're looking to preserve the historic looking that has characterized the city of Tampa. And we will assure that we will not abuse the parking space. One of our current facility, it is located within the city of Tampa limits and we have never presented any issues or concerns with neighbors as far as overcrowding it. We are identified to care for a quiet group of residents. We have never presented any problems. I would like to appreciate the time of listening if you have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Dingfelder.
Ma'am, would you put that, that's part of our package that we got, that's part of the staff report and it shows a map that I think is probably the most relevant thing. If you can pop it on the overhead and just identify which one is, is, is the subject property that is being proposed and where the other two are.
Okay, this is our property, okay? And these are the other two, this one and this one. And one of them you have to actually go across Ram Avenue to get to.
Okay, so, so the one behind you there is like two blocks behind you and then the other one?
Correct. It's about one, two.
And the other one is down the street and then over a couple of blocks away?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No. Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate it. Is anyone here to comment on item number 42? If so, please come forward.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Councilman Meniscalco, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What is the pleasure of council?
I'll take it, sir.
Go ahead.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we reverse the zoning administrator's denial of special use permit application. I see it as a... I see it as SU one dash nineteen dash forty-one, because the petitioner has demonstrated that the petition, if the waiver is granted, is consistent with the applicable general standard set forth here in, set forth in section twenty-seven dash one twenty-nine. At time of permitting, the site plan must meet all applicable code and technical standards, see section twenty-seven dash sixty-one B and twenty-seven dash sixty, I'm sorry, twenty-seven dash one twenty-seven B two. I see here, you know, you have, by looking at this map, you have barely one per block, it's spread out, it's not a heavy concentration in one area, so it, you know, maintains the makeup and character of the neighborhood, it's not saturating anything, and I believe the petitioner has shown substantial evidence of that, and that's it.
We have a motion by Councilman, yes, sir.
I'm not going to support the motion, and I'm more likely to be alone, that's fine, because the rules of regulation of zoning this year is twelve hundred and fifty feet or twelve hundred feet away, and it's the same thing, if somebody come here with a single-family unit that's thirty-five, and they want a thirty-six story, I mean thirty-five feet, thirty-six feet, and we say no, either, I'm not against the project, but the way I read the law, I'm going to vote no, only because it does not meet the requirement of distance separation, and if this council wants to change the law, then go on and change it a thousand feet, whatever feet you want next door. In fact, other councils have put one right next door to the other one, and I voted against that one also, and I've consistently voted that way because of the distance separation, that's all.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Iskaku, a second by Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we move to item fifty, Ms. Selman.
Good afternoon.
This is our final one.
And yeah, this is your final item, correct?
Yes.
Item fifty, you had made a motion for the legal department to appear and present a comprehensive overview of the charter changes that were adopted in the last election, and provide recommendations for implementing the amendments to the charter that were approved. And going back over this, I was struck by something rather funny, as you remember, the Charter Review Commission met from April seventeenth to May eighteenth, I'm sorry, from April of twenty seventeen to May of twenty eighteen, and at a May seventeenth meeting, the recommendations from the Charter Review Commission were presented to council, and then in August of twenty eighteen, council sent, basically approved an ordinance, which I provided you all a copy of, approving the changes and having them put on the ballot, and then, of course, they were approved by the voters at the March twenty-nineteen election. But what struck me as kind of amusing is, looking at the council now, with the exception of Mr. Dingfelder, every single person on this council was either on the council when you all approved these charter amendments, or served on the Charter Review Commission that made the recommendations for the amendments, so I just think that's funny. And of course, I was on the Charter Review Commission as well, as was my soon-to-be fellow assistant deputy city attorney, Morris Massey. So some things you are never able to leave behind, but in any event, I did provide to you, just to refresh your recollection, a copy of the Charter Review Commission report that was presented to the city council by our Charter Review Commission to the council in May of twenty eighteen. I also provided you with a copy of the ordinance, again, that was approved by council in August of twenty eighteen, approving an ordinance to put those recommended changes on the ballot, which, again, were approved in March of twenty nineteen. So without going through every amendment, because, again, we all have familiarity with it and the hour is late, I would note that the vast majority of the changes, you know, as those of you particularly who served on the commission will recall, were a lot of housekeeping, modernizing the language, taking out, making it gender neutral, removing outdated references to boards and officers of the city and department heads that no longer exist. There were items that were formerly in part B of the charter that we voted to move into part A. Some significant changes that were approved that pertained specifically to city council is in section two-point-oh-four of the charter. The council now has the ability, with a five-vote majority, to create other staff positions that would be paid for by the council in its own budget. Section six-point-oh-one, again, gives the council with a five-vote majority the ability to waive residency requirements for department heads for up to one year with two additional extensions allowed. But more significantly, in going back through the charter changes, because of your motion, I was, I looked carefully to see what else the city needs to do to implement these charter changes, and, again, most of them were self-implementing, but the four I identified as needing further action are these. In section two-oh-one, the Charter Review Commission recommended, and the city approved, the city voters approved, that the planning commission would prepare new population estimates and basically redraw the city council districts if necessary because of population changes prior to the next city election. So that doesn't require any additional action on your part, but we will certainly reach out to the planning commission and make sure they're aware of this charter change, and obviously, they have some time to implement the process, but we want to remind them of that. Section two-point-oh-nine was a change that required that every ordinance that's proposed to be adopted by the city council must be posted on the city's website at least seven days in advance of its adoption. That is actually being done through our published agendas with the sire links, so that's being complied with. Section ten-point-oh-three was the item that we've discussed before that requires the city to adopt an ordinance, setting forth the interval and manner of providing harassment, anti-discrimination, implicit bias, and cultural competency training for all city employees. And as you'll recall, we have scheduled a workshop on March twenty-sixth for our department to present you with a proposed ordinance in that regard. The final item, frankly, I was a bit alarmed to see fell through the cracks. Section ten-point-oh-seven of the charter included language requiring the city to adopt something by September of twenty nineteen, which obviously did not happen. So our department is working now to bring forth an ordinance, and that particular charter section is the one that addresses those instances in which citizens by, so the citizen initiative or referendum could propose a ordinance or could propose reconsideration of an ordinance that was adopted by city council. Now, there are exceptions to that, that cannot by citizen initiative or referenda touch budget ordinances, capital improvement plan ordinances, zoning ordinances, comp plan ordinances, emergency ordinances, or anything having to do with the appropriation of money, the imposition of taxes or salaries. But in theory, a citizen could by citizen initiative or referenda propose a different kind of ordinance or request reconsideration of an adopted ordinance, all of which is to say that the charter change said that the city would adopt by ordinance a very specific process by which these citizen initiatives and referenda can be done. Again, that didn't happen, but our office is now working, we'll work with the supervisor of elections to make sure we come up with appropriate language and present an ordinance to council. So the citizens had the right before the charter change to do this, they have the right now. The only thing that the amendment required was that we actually adopt a specific ordinance making clear the process for the citizen initiative and referendum. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Thank you very much. How interesting that everybody was involved in the process.
I know.
You know, everyone is hearing more coming back.
I thought the same, except Councilman Dingfelder, who, but he does his homework, and we'll catch up.
You didn't know that? Yeah? Where you been?
Hey, man, I'm the last of those.
What year is this? Councilman Dingfelder.
Going back to two-point-oh-one, I know in the past, the planning commission staff did that redrawing of council districts, I think, every decade after the census, and I'm just wondering, what if, what did you guys, I'll say you guys, what did y'all change on that one? Are you doing that every election? They're going to revisit it every election?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the charter language, yes.
Yeah, the summary, I wasn't sure, so.
Okay. Anything else?
I think y'all did a good job overall, although I did have a question. It says two-point-one-four removes the power of city council defined as a punishment for contempt. I thought that was interesting, because why would you take, I mean, what, not that we ever do it, but just in case we wanted to find somebody in contempt for not showing up to one of our subpoenas that we never issued, why, what teeth would we have to issue those subpoenas?
I don't believe that made it into the final ordinance, because you're looking at the recommendations.
Right.
I don't see that in the ordinance.
Oh, good.
So I am assuming that was one of the recommendations that did not make it. I'll double-check, but.
Mr. Shelby, is that your recollection, or do you recall?
Well, I look at the latest charter, and it's still there, so.
Okay, good.
That's after the amendments.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Selman.
Thank you.
Always appreciate it. Okay, I guess, motions, Councilman Dingfelder.
Nothing today, I just, I wanted to give a shout-out to Plant High School coach Weiner, Robert Weiner, who had an amazing, not only career of wins over the last decade at Plant High School, but also building character. I mean, I think, I think that's what made the difference over there at Plant, is he worked with those young men and just, you know, built a great program of character building, and anyway, he's moving on to Toledo University level, and we wish him well. I was going to ask him to come in for accommodation, but he already hit the road and was driving up there before I thought of it, but anyway, a shout-out to Rob Weiner.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goode's. We can, we'll come back, if Councilman Iskaku.
No, I just want to wish everyone a happy new year. I know we've, it's our first meeting back, I look forward to a lot of great things this year and in this decade, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Citro.
Yes, councilmembers, I'm not sure how we want to work this, I know how I would like to suggest it. I was doing demolition on my condominium, and had my F-150 full of junk trash and debris, and took it to the McKay Bay Scaling.
I'll get back to you.
Where I was able to, for a nominal fee, dump all this wood stuff and construction debris. I posted that on Facebook complaining that I see so much junk trash and debris dumped along the sides of the roads, and there is many residents that are getting tired of that. But I was also told that there are some people that can't afford to take their junk trash and debris to this place for disposal. So I'd like to have, on the thirtieth, if we could, have Mr. Mark Warford, Warfalk, excuse me, of Solid Waste, come and give us discussion on how we can have clean sweeps come more often, how we may be able to lessen the price, if any, for people that want to dump their stuff at the McKay Bay. So hopefully, I will get a second on that for the thirtieth of January.
Mr. Citro.
Yes, sir.
And it's so nice you mentioned that, because Broward has a special program that they do that, and I think it's great that you brought it, and I'll support that motion.
And, councilmembers, I don't want to take more than ten minutes on this. I won't hold you to that.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Citro, I'm a regular out there with my own truck filled with junk and pay what's appropriate, but I agree with you completely, I think, and maybe Mr. Wolfpack might want to look at perhaps quarterly, a day when nobody pays, you know, or something like that, so, you know, or, you know, some sort of, something, you know, along those lines. They have a traffic problem, they have a problem, and they're in the process of rebuilding that entire facility, so they might not want to implement that right now, but when they rebuild the new facility and they have a better traffic flow arrangement, might be something they might want to look into.
And gentlemen, as I was saying, it was easy for me to take my things out there, but for some other people, they may not own a pickup truck, they may not have the means to get things there. So this is something that maybe we can proceed with so there isn't so much junk, trash, debris, mattresses, TVs, whatever, along the sides of our roads.
Yes, sir. Councilman Carlson.
Just one quick thing to add to that, there is a facility, I forgot the name of it, but it's South of Gandy that was open, that was closed like twenty years ago, and the neighbors say people show up to dump, and it's closed, so they just dump it everywhere. So that's, that's an issue too, slightly different, but we still need to resolve it.
Okay, now who seconded that? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Goode's, all in favor, any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Thank you, councilman, very much, nothing more, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Miranda, anything?
Yes, it's a twelfth, thirty, and I pass.
There you go. Councilman Carlson.
Nothing, thanks.
Councilman Goode's.
I got a couple. First one, I would like to make a motion for city council to give accommodation to the Tampa Organization of Black Affairs for their fortieth annual Dr. ML King Junior Leadership Breakfast. I present this accommodation at a leadership breakfast on January twenty, twenty twenty.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode's, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor, any opposed?
Second motion, Mr. Chairman, there have been some issues over at the Jackson Heights Center, which is our mostly-used recreational center, you know, that's about the turf field we have on our side, and with the recent vandalism, and lack of security gates, I need to find out what's going on. So I'd like to make a motion to request an appearance before city council from a representative of the Parks and Recreation Department to provide plans for a solution to cure and protect the turf field at the Jackson Heights NFL Center to prevent further vandalism. I would like the information presented at a regular schedule council on February twenty, twenty twenty.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode's, a second by Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor. Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir, last motion of the day, I would like to make a motion for a workshop that includes the Contract Administration Department to appear and provide information on the RFP and bid document preparation process. In addition, how the estimated amount is determined for brick-and-mortar projects, the criteria used to determine the dollar amounts, and WMBE participation, and the process for coming up, for upcoming, for coming up with these numbers. I would like this report on two, twenty-seven, of twenty twenty.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode's, a second by Councilman Iskaku, all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, and now, if, anything else, sir? Okay, thank you. And just briefly, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and we're honored, obviously, to have a former law enforcement officer, Councilman Goode's, with us, but just, we, I know somebody, somebody told me that this morning, and I couldn't say it at the beginning, so we obviously appreciate all of our law enforcement officers and professionals out there and their families who go through a lot while they protect in service. Just two quick motions, if I may. First one is, as I mentioned before, February sixth, two thousand twenty, I would ask that Chief Nick with Tampa Fire Rescue come and report, as mentioned before, on Fire Station Thirteen, fire service, and emergency service to the north Tampa area that is served by Fire Station Thirteen, and steps that can be taken by the city to improve said services.
Second.
We have a motion from Chairman Viera with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. And then just lastly, in two thousand seventeen, for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget, this council passed, as part of that budget, design money for an autism sensory-friendly park to be in the new Tampa area, the, and this is something that council hasn't been privy to, but the area that was specifically designated for that park wound up being mighty close to a neighborhood, which is very interesting over in Tampa Palms. So I've been working with Parks and Recs to look at additional sites for that autism park in new Tampa, and I would motion that an in-person report on the new Tampa Autism Park before Tampa City Council occur from Parks and Recs on February twentieth, and that this include an update on estimated costs and details of the location.
We have a motion from Chairman Viera with a second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Was there a date attached to that? I'm sorry.
February twentieth.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, if I can, relative to your previous motion to February sixth with the fire chief, as part of that motion, do you want that removed from the January twenty-third?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shelby. If I may, I'm going to ask for that twenty-third.
Yes.
To be removed, as the, they need more time.
Motion from Chairman Viera, a second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Councilman Iskaku, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. Motion by Councilman Iskaku, a second by Councilman Moran, all in favor? Any opposed? Yes, ma'am.
Not a legal issue, but I just, you were all talking about collection of debris and all that, and I just, since we have the people watching, I was, I know, I noticed this because I got an email about it or a flyer about it the other day. The city does have the sweep program, and people can go on the website and look. It's S period W period E, you know, E period sweep. And there's 40 dates, and you have to look and see when they're coming through your neighborhood, but it does allow you to put a lot of debris at your curbside and have it picked up for free.
It surely does, and Solid Waste, I give kudos to them for being able to do that, but maybe we can get that more than what they do.
But I just want to let people know, because it apparently started this week, so people need to look and see what data applies to their neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you.